Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Today is March 21st, 2024. I will call this meeting to order at 7:01. And I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you please. Thank you all very much. And I'll ask our planner, Maureen Justy, if she would call the role, please, for the commission?
Chairman Veely?
Here.
Mayan Josie?
Here.
June Daly?
Here.
Andrea Millard?
Here.
Timothy Zigma?
Here.
Brian Rogan?
Excused.
Scott Hamel?
He's also excused.
Alternate Michael Aschusick? Do it right this time? I'm gonna get it in the next couple of months. Alternate John Diken?
Present.
Alternate Steve Beal. Madam Chair, you have two regular members missing.
Okay, so for the purpose of this meeting, I will ask Mr. John Diken and Steve Biella, Jr., to please be seated members of the commission. Onto the approval of the minutes. We have March 7th.
I have to add an item to the, please.
Oh, boy. Okay. What have you got for us, Ms. Josie?
We need to add, under Commission Business, Item D, receipt of new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary, as Item D, under Commission Business.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Josie. We have a second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Okay. Anything else?
At this moment.
Okay, all right. Moving on, the approval of the minute for March 7th, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections? Do we have any comments? Do we have any approvals?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Josie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Millard, for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. And I believe we have a correction to state for the January 18, 2024 minutes.
Yes, Steve Biella should not be noted in the minutes as being seated for the meeting. There was a quorum of regular members.
Okay, all righty.
I'll make a motion to accept with that correction.
We have a motion to accept the correction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zigma. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Moving on. Oh, we have another vote. Okay, good. All right. Excellent, excellent. Love, woman, synonymous. All right. Commission Business. We have the bond reduction releases. One is the request of staff to call for the subdivision bond for Catherine Kosicki Estates before 771 Norton Road for the town completed installation of sidewalks. Maureen, how are we?
So this is a subdivision done a number of years ago, and the sidewalks were never completed. The town did complete the entire. It is on. Why aren't we hearing me?
Oh, I can hear you.
We don't usually have that problem with my microphone. I wonder if somebody flipped microphones up here. So this subdivision was completed a number of years ago. I had it written down, and now I forget what that year was. But it's the subdivision on the north side of Norton Road between Four Rod Road and Kensington Road, just before you go over the Railroad Tracks Bridge on the right-hand side. It was an old farmhouse, and they created a subdivision of a couple of lots there, a few lots there, and around the corner on Four Rod. They were to have an installation of sidewalks. It was never done. We had bonding for it. The town did complete those sidewalks. I think, not sure it was realized that the bond was in place at that time, and, you know. But a couple of years ago, during one of our sidewalk projects, we completed those sidewalks, and the amount is in excess of the amount held in the bond. So the bond was specifically for the sidewalks, and so the town wants to call that bond so that we can add it to replace the money spent on sidewalks.
Okay. Questions?
Make a motion to call the bond as proposed. Okay?
I can also read them even from the Engineering Division, if you'd like.
Okay, it's short and sweet.
A paragraph.
Okay.
Writing to confirm that for several years back, following the death of Catherine Kosicki, the Public Works Department, through contracted forces, installed a concrete curb and sidewalk along the north side of Norton Road from Four Rod Road to Kensington Road. This section of sidewalk included the entire frontage of the Kosicki subdivision. Estimating today's cost to construct that section, fronting the Kosicki parcel would run in the neighborhood of $22,000. Thus, Public Works is requesting the commission call the bond and reimburse at least a portion of the cost from calling that bond.
Is it Carol's birthday?
No.
All righty. Yeah, somebody, she just muted herself. Okay, great. Thank you. I'll restate the motion to call the bond as recommended. Okay, a motion by Ms. Josie. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Diken. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay. Request, no problem. Moving on to the next item. It's a request for a release of a site bond for landscape maintenance held for AIM Partners, Focus Physical Therapy Phase 2 at 1138 to 1156 Farmington Avenue. How's everything on that project?
That's completed. You were holding just the retainer on that, because it was all completed last year. We have the retainer for one year. It's been more than one year. It was inspected. Everything looks as though it's surviving well, and so it's okay to release.
Okay.
Staff's opinion.
Make a motion to release the bond, the maintenance bond for that.
Okay. Mr. Zigma has a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Josie, for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Okay, moving on to the Certificate of Zoning Compliance for Indoor Retail Marketplace of Kristen Yusov at 945 Farmington Avenue. This is the property of Fafto Realty LLC. It's in a CCD 2 zone. Okay. Well, let me see if I can get my paperwork here. All righty.
So we provided you the Certificate of Zoning Compliance for newer relocated businesses. You might recall this kind of was first called to our attention for the proposal to utilize an entertainment recreational space at Webster Square Plaza. The applicant has determined that, you know, that would require a change to the special permit, and either the owner or applicant decided not to pursue that venue. Ms. Yusov, who's put in this application, is proposing to use the former bungalow on the Ave or Lubinix Farm Barn Building. It's been repainted, was red, now gray, I think, for this indoor vendor space instead. We're calling, because it is a unique use, although has, you know, it is retail aspects, that is a retail use, that building currently would qualify as a retail use, which is why we recommended she provide a Certificate of Zoning Compliance form. However, we'd like you to determine that the use does fit that. We've been doing quite a bit of looking into what's required when you have a market like that. If you were to, I think, actually, let me think about this for a second. Did she talk to you about the farmer's market today, or was that in the emails to me? We've been going back and forth quite a bit this week. Yeah. All right, so she's not pursuing a farmer's market at this time. She, the, it seems to be a retail establishment, and therefore would fit the location. However, we do feel it needs conditions to confirm that the health and safety requirements that would, which would be typical through the Certificate of Zoning Compliance, are so noted should you determine that it is, fits the retail use category. That, those conditions would include other agency permitting as required, solicitor, including solicitor permitting, if it's required by the police department, the Health District permitting if that pertains to any food items that they have permitting for, and all insurances and licensing for sales be, including those for sales, be the responsibility of the organizer to ensure that everyone's done that. I would note, based on a question that was asked at a previous meeting in our regulations, there is a section that speaks to auction and private vendor sales of surplus, overstock, collectible goods, et cetera, and that's for, that's allowed as a, you can apply for that use in the PI zone, and therefore, because that's otherwise regulated, it would not seem to be permitted or included with a Certificate of Zoning Compliance for this kind of use. So I think that covers what you were asking about with regard to a flea market type thing. Those would be, I would think those would be collectible, you know, those items that are vintage, collectible, et cetera, that are covered in the PI regulations. Again, we do have other, I have a series of emails I can pull up. We had, I did ask some questions today, I think, or over the last week. I think most of those have been answered, and the applicant is here if you choose to have her speak.
Okay, great. Ms. Yusov. Okay, yeah, okay. Well, why don't you come over to the microphone in case just the commission has some questions. State your name and address, just for the record, please.
Kristen Yusov, 44 Briar Patch Drive, Berlin, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, for some reason, that's not a, give everyone a second to catch up here. Okay, welcome. I do have a couple of questions. I just want some clarification from you, just because I'm interested in the project. It's a wonderful location. So why don't you tell me a little bit about your proposal for this business?
It's really just started out as, there were just 15 vendors, and it was really my way of being able to bring together community. We are a small business owner. There is a lot of small businesses going out of business. There's nobody really supporting cottage license owners, and I thought this would be a great opportunity. A lot of our friends own small businesses. We watch them close down. So this is just our way of giving back.
Okay, so this retail, what, tell me about your proposal. What would you like to see happen here? What, how are you gonna start? What do you hope to get? What point do you need to, want to get to?
The point I want to get to? This is just a collective community, really.
Okay.
Holding on one another.
So is it, is it farmers growing vegetables? Is it, is it farmers with like?
My original intent was to create a farmer's market.
Okay.
I've, I've gone through hoops.
Yeah.
To get it started, and at that, at this time, I'm not willing to continue jumping through hoops to do something really good for our town.
Okay, well, I understand the process may have been frustrating for you, but it's a, it's a process that anyone who's opening any kind of outside market, or vegetable market, or just, you know, having that background as, you know.
Get it. I'm willing to play.
And that's, you know, we're not, our purpose here is to, is to have you share your idea with us. We're very interested to see what your plans are. In other words, as, as Ms. Justy had pointed out, a flea market would be unacceptable.
This is not a flea market.
Okay, all right, so you and I.
Artisans, artists.
So is it like goat soaps? Is it like family paintings? Is it earring jewelry that's being made?
And every single person has a, has a license. They're asked before they're, before they are committed to being a vendor.
Okay, so then not only licensure, but they have insurances as well?
Yes.
All right. Are there food products, like maybe somebody's making homemade cookies or brownies or something? Because you'll, you'll need insurance and.
We have the licenses for that on file.
Yeah, okay, all righty.
We're in, we're in good communication with Jeff from the Health District.
Okay, all right. This is not an inquisition. It's just.
I get it.
We're trying to, we're trying to get a picture of what you're trying to do. Okay. So other commissioners have questions. Just, I wanted to get the ball rolling, and let's go.
Thank you for that. Would you explain your plans as to whether or not you're gonna be having a monthly sale, or is it gonna be open more than that now that you have a different location?
Sure. I would like to make it weekends.
Every weekend?
Every weekend. Yeah, that is the goal.
And do you have hours of operation in mind, or?
Saturday, 10 to 1. That's a definite. I'm not sure about Sunday.
And would your goal be to increase the number of vendors? Would you be opening space or having space available to vendors outside of the group that you have already?
We have about 100 applicants on the waiting list. So I believe the space can fit about, comfortably about 40.
Okay, so let me just dovetail. So you say you have 100 people who are interested in being part of this collective, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Other commissioners with questions? Yes, please, Tim.
I'm looking at the department's response here, and the Fire Marshal's looking for required inspection before the opening. And I'm just wondering, is that gonna be scheduled tomorrow? Because it's supposed to open up on Saturday.
I'm, I had not talked to the Fire Marshal about that, and I did not realize it was advertised for this week already. It was just, like, we've just been processing this as the information comes through all this past week since we got the application on Friday.
Not against the applicant at all. It's just the procedures that we have in place where our zoning regulations and stuff, they have to be followed. Health District, Fire Marshal, Police Department, Water Department, building officials, and they all got to look at something like this. And I just want to make sure that it's all gonna be done before it's officially opened. And if that's gonna be Saturday, then I, the only thing I see here basically is making sure that the food vendors have a proper license, which she just stated they do, and the Fire Marshal's can respect it to his liking.
And we can, we can make sure that he's aware that there's an interest to open it this weekend, and then his sign-off would be required regardless for the Certificate of Zoning Compliance. I was gonna actually add the comment that the number of vendors and the occupancy would be dependent on the Fire Marshal looking at the, the space layout and making sure. He did verbally comment to me a number of weeks ago when they were looking into a different space, that he didn't have concerns with regard to the spacing because of the vendor tables and just the aisle widths, and knowing if you'd have to manipulate around, he felt it would, would fit the size. Not for this location, but he was fairly comfortable with the idea of tables and monitoring aisle widths, et cetera.
Basically, you probably go look at Egress and grab some, on the property, tables are not set in front of doors and stuff like that. I'm sure that's the type of inspection that is gonna do, that the, you know, the doors are marked to exit and stuff like that. So if that could get done, you know, I have no problem with it. I don't want to put anyone in danger with, there's the Fire Marshal.
I do have a call-in to the Fire Marshal already.
Okay. It's a short period of time. That's all, that's all. If he can fit in any schedule, then I'll have a problem.
I just, I have one other. Okay. So if you have so many vendors interested to participate in this, would your plan be, as the warmer weather is coming, to have them set up under small tents outside?
No.
So no outside vending?
No.
And Andrea?
Yes, as far as the food is gonna be sold here, they will bring that in. Will it be made there?
Nothing will be made on premises.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one follow-up question, and, and this is, has no reflection on you, but it's from a past history here in town. I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on this, that this is not going to be, or nor will grow to be, some sort of flea market, or an inside tag sale. And the reason I say that is because as warmer weather gets, folks like to have tag sales, but some folks go to the extreme where they have a tag sale every single week, and then the stuff stays out. And we're trying to just make sure that we understand, and you understand for the record, that that will not be acceptable at this location.
I'm not interested in any of that.
Okay, all right.
This is more to support small business owners.
Okay, and I have, I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that because it's in the downtown area, and we've done a lot of work in the downtown area to try to grow it to be successful. We do want you to be successful. We want your vendors to be successful, but we also want the town to be successful. Okay? I think Mr. Edge has something to contribute.
Thank you very much. Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. Just quickly, a couple things. I believe the deputy fire marshal, Richard Cop, is available tomorrow for an inspection at the property. I've been in touch with him, and I just wanted to mention the fact that I think this is important, because if you look at the growth we've seen since COVID started, we just did our 95th ribbon cutting groundbreaking, and probably at least 40 of those are ones that were cottage businesses within the last couple of years. So I think, in my opinion, the folks that are gonna be here are, are future businesses that are going to be in storefronts and other places. And I think, and I appreciate the commission's diligence in looking at this, and I know I've been working with Ms. Yusov, because it is important, because not everyone can afford a storefront, but there's a togetherness with it, and I'm excited about the opportunities, because I think the community right now, it's an amazing community. There's a lot going on, and I think this will add to it in what we all know is a very special building. So, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Anything else?
I just want to reiterate that, you know, it's just the questions that we have to have clear, this, this commission, because of the thing. We've modernized downtown, you know, if we drive down Farm City Avenue now, from, from five years ago to now, it's been a real big improvement. This building's been a good improvement with the paint job and everything else. I mean, that really screwed up the farm that happened here. So I don't think anyone here is, is against the idea of cottage businesses. I think it was a great thing when they just adopted that, what, last year, I think it was. And, you know, and I'm sure my wife will have me there, there Saturday.
One last question, if I can. Do you see yourself operating your business during the winter, or is this like a spring, summer, fall venture for you?
This will be an all, all year.
All right, okay. So if there's any deviation from the hours or whatever, you'll be in touch with the planning department?
Can do that.
Before the hours are deviated? Okay, all right. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead.
I do think the Fire Marshal will set number of vendors. You got 100 applications, probably not go put 100 units.
We're only taking 40.
So if you're only talking 40, and that's the guideline that you're operating by, you know, there's probably not a problem. But if you, all of a sudden, you got 75 in there, and now it's a different thing for the Fire Marshal, you know? You gotta keep on touch with the Fire Marshal, Police Department, all that stuff. Just, they'll, they'll be in touch with you if you do something different.
Okay, okay. Anyone else, or what's the consensus? No, yes?
Add, so we did have a number of emails back and forth, trying to get, you know, a full handle on what this is, and I think she's, between my explanation and hers, I think we've hit on all of the factors, but any, any statements, they'll, they'll all be incorporated into the zoning compliance form, should you allow us to sign that off.
Okay.
Now, as reference material, you know, people in the building getting the licenses, all that.
Yeah.
And I just was flipping through the emails quickly to make sure there was no other topics that I, we had thought were relevant.
All right. And the parking was satisfactory at that site, correct?
It was a retail.
Yeah.
It's already been approved for retail, so even if it has non-conforming parking, the parking is set at that.
All right.
Established location.
Just want to make sure. Okay. What's the pleasure, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
With stipulation that all departments' concerns are met, and the food vendors do have license.
Insurance.
And the Fire Marshal inspects it before it's opened.
Okay. And they have to have insurances too, right?
Insurance.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks for clearing up that motion. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay. Terrific, Mr. Biella. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Quiet today.
You're good.
Okay. I know. Thank you, and good luck to you.
See you, Kate.
All right, wow, Stan, wow, applause. Yay. We never get, we never get clapped at, do we? I think you're the first, that's the fir-, can we hear that again? It just felt good. It felt good. Thank you very much. I hope we can make the rest of the crowd happy, too. I know. This is like, whoa. What's up with that? Who cares?
Media.
Oops. I can edit it. All right, moving on. We have the Site Plan Application of Kevin Bundy for a 5,000-square-foot addition to an existing building and related site plan improvements, and construction of a storm water management system at 127 New Park Drive, property of Kevin Bundy, M. Bundy Lifetime Trust in the BT1 Zone. Ah, here you are. How you doing today, Mr. Bundy?
I'm actually Alan Bond Giovanni. I'm a licensed land surveyor in the state of Connecticut.
Oh, my goodness.
170 Payne Road in Newington.
I'm gonna get my glasses fixed, sorry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission staff. For the record, I am representing the Kevin M. Bundy Lifetime Trust and Bundy Overhaul and Repair. This application is for a 5,000-square-foot addition to an existing building that was built in 2002 in the BT1 Zone. Property's about 11.4 acres. I'm sure you're all aware, this is from driving range.
Yes.
Turnpike. The property was known as 2061 Berlin Turnpike, but it's changed, the town has changed it to 127 New Park because of that building being built three years, or two years ago. This was anticipated when that building was built, the Bundy overhaul and repair.
Can I just ask you to lean into the mic? I'm sorry, I really don't think you're echoing enough.
So Bundy overhaul and repair, one could say, is a conservative business in their operations and the way they grow. Again, this was anticipated when the original building was presented about three years ago, and. Again, this was anticipated when the original building was presented about three years ago and constructed two years ago. And this is the culmination of that building doubling it in size. Have a site plan here. I'm sorry for the public. This is a an as of right application that public generally doesn't get to comment on, so I'm gonna.
I'm going to share. I'm going to share your plan on the screen. I don't have the same.
Thank you.
I don't have your markup.
The 131 New Park Avenue, the main building for Bundy overhaul and repair is to the east of this building. To the south of the site is New Park Drive, to the west is the Berlin Turnpike and the lighter brown to the north is the existing building. This building is purely an addition. It won't require any additional paving or utility services to the building. It's going to be a steel building, three sides connected to the existing building. One of the comments from staff was that they'd like the applicant to provide architectural drawings and materials. I apologize, the owner had not been able to provide that yet, but I do have photographs of the existing building and it's going to be a steel building of the same color. Three sides, there's going to be two three-foot man doors or personnel doors for egress in the back of the building and probably no other openings in the building. Again, it's going to look just like it is, just twice as big when they're done. As part of our site plan development, we designed redesigned the drainage system to accommodate the additional impervious area of the building. We've shifted it to the south and the drainage patterns will remain the same. We have received in the wetlands approval a couple of weeks ago for the this application and it's a fairly basic application. I don't know there's much more that I can add at this point. I think the only comments we haven't received are from engineering.
I have those. As I walked upstairs.
Okay. I'm going to say that I'm confident that what we submitted is probably acceptable as submitted. If there's any minor comments that need to be addressed, I'm sure the applicant would be happy to satisfy those.
Please, Ms. Miller, in these photos that you're passing around, where where is the addition going to be going? What's?
So those doors are on the north side of the building. Those are along this side, along the parking, the opposite side. Yes. Yep.
Any other questions? Staff, questions, comments?
So as Mr. Bon Giovanni said, it is and it wasn't anticipated addition at the time of the the application for the first 5,000 square feet of the building. The and there are no particular outstanding comments except, you know, reflecting changing the parking table. It just does not reflect the zoning regulations, although their parking satisfies the zoning regulations, the way the table's written. It doesn't meet the current requirements of the zone. You did discuss the architectural design and we did receive comments from the town engineer. Their their technical comments, however, he starts with the the following are rather not technical, not technical comments requiring responses but are noted for the record and for inclusion into the conditions of approval and or construction drawings as applicable. It's notes on the storm water report, the water quality basin and detention and invert elevations. So they're technical and can be resolved with permitting during the permitting process, designs.
Any other questions or comments?
A copy of this for you today because I did just get it a short time ago.
Yes. I actually go by there today and I looked over there. All the drainage or butt lands issues, I guess, have been established over there.
Yes, they have.
Grasses and.
Yes, mitigation area and along.
Wells or wells are in and all and already. So basically, you agree that anything that the engineer has will be addressed.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Anyone? So how do we feel about the application?
You know, we saw this application before with the proposed addition on it. But then that same map came in. And he will address any concerns. So the engineering department, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Zigma. Do I have a second?
Does your motion include subject to staff comments?
Well, I said engineering subject to staff comments.
Okay.
To Maureen.
In the building inspector.
I will second.
Okay, second by Ms. Jersey. Do we have further discussion than all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Good night. I got you home at a good time, huh? Okay. No clapping though. No, we don't get, we don't.
He got out of here fast.
Everyone's going to have to clap tonight. That's it. No sour faces. Everybody claps. Okay, so now we go into the public hearings and I think you have, no, 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 we have D. We have something added. It was a something though.
Yes, so we had added receipt of new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. And the item is subdivision application of Kokomo 2 LLC for a two lot subdivision of 44 Rand Deckers for a lot created at Zero Club Drive.
Okay.
That's the first application. It's a two lot subdivision. The with the change to the, they had attempted a lot split, but the lot seems to have been created just about the time period that the regulations, subdivision regulations, that whole block were established and therefore couldn't provide proof that the lot would have been eligible for a free split and was not, you know, a previous subdivision. So they and the building square regulations as they were a year ago would not have allowed for the lot with the change to the building square regulations, the lot seems to meet zoning requirements. Of course, that's subject to the when you see it for the in our analysis during the subdivision review, but that application has been submitted. So we'd like to schedule a public hearing for it.
Do you have a suggested date?
I would say not before 4/18 because of the other items that are upcoming on your agendas.
4/18 is our meeting date.
Or 14, for April 4th is the next meeting. I think you have another number of items that are continuing to, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up my calendar because I can't have it on my computer at the same time as I'm sharing. So April 4th is your next meeting. April 18th is the meeting after that and then May 2nd. So we have another a number of items that will be on the April 4th already and on the 18th seems like it could be reasonable.
Okay, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this item for April 18th.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jersey. Do we have a second? Second for discussion?
Second.
Second, okay. Further discussion?
I have a question, Maureen. Wasn't this in front of us a while ago and he he pulled?
He withdrew.
He withdrew it?
That was because of the building square.
So he waited until we changed that?
Well, coming back since it's been changed.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, this one. Was there a I'm trying to look, remember that meeting. Was there a ownership question on that property?
No, that was the property. That was a different subdivision application near Sage Park. This is Rand Deckers up near Shuttle Metal Country Club. The other application was of four or five lot subdivision on Wilkes Pond and Somerset Drive and Sage Park. And that had a number of issues from various.
I thought I thought this one might have the same thing.
I thought so too.
Yeah, so.
This one, actually, there is an issue that the lot was created. They did sell off and that's being looked into legally, but if they were to divide it, it would resolve that the lot, the parcel that they've created is not buildable at this time and whether or not it could have been divided or not divided, could have been severed from the building lot is subject to legal analysis.
Okay, but are we stepping in something here by by allowing us him to go to public hearing, not knowing whether or not he truly owns the property that he owns? And that there's no liens or legality that we're commingling with here?
That was the issue on the other one. I don't believe that was an issue that would be an issue here, but I can certainly check that before we.
Yeah.
Because he has ownership and he had ownership of the lot at the time he severed the the existing house lot. And I believe we've asked him for authorization from that owner that bought the parcel from him. The existing house.
Well, ask the question. Do we get it?
Yeah.
Did we get the?
I don't know if I've gotten it yet. This just came in this week.
I just don't, I don't want to put us in a bad spot.
Advised me to to, when we get applications, have you accept them or not and schedule and put start putting them on the public on our agendas for acceptance of applications and scheduling. If you'd like to defer that to the next meeting, the date of acceptance may restatuary, if it's deemed to be a valid application, would still refer to today as the first date after the day it was submitted, but you don't have to schedule a public hearing for it. And you can decide it's not accepted at a subsequent meeting because of something deficient in the application.
And the motion is to put it on the 18th?
So and
So we'll have.
Wait until because of notice deadlines for each of your meetings where I have to get it to the paper approximately 17 or 18 days before a meeting, notice a public hearing. I'm actually having to notice, you know, know that it's going to be on the agenda meetings in advance at least if not more.
Okay, so if we schedule it.
Put it off. That's fine too. We can, you have time on this.
All right, what's the what's the flavor of the commission? Do we? Well, we have the motion. So we have a second.
Question on it.
Of course.
Going up Lincoln Street, take a left on Rand Decker. Just on right side of Rand Decker or left side of Rand Decker?
Probably on the right side.
Right side. It's the corner of Rand Decker and Club Road, Club Drive. Rand Decker and Club, you turn, if you turn on Rand Deckers and you turn right onto Club Drive and go north on Club Drive to the high tension wires above your head.
Wrong question.
Lot is, does include an easement on the high tension wires. Yes.
Okay, that's that was the question. One of the questions before is the easement and the block, the house block, the and now we changed our regulations, but I'm still concerned about the, I'm still concerned about the wire easements.
It would not be able to build within a utilities company's easement. According to my understanding of any of the easements, and if you look at all the houses along there, you know, nothing is in there. The the utility companies have company has only in unique circumstances allowed fencing or a lot of things within their easement.
Yeah, it's got to be renewable.
I'm looking for the date.
I mean, we can we can go ahead with this scheduling, I guess, and then we can have all of our questions answered there.
Well, I was going to say if everybody would be more comfortable, I would withdraw my motion and we can verify.
I would prefer that.
We can make, we can schedule the public hearing next meeting.
Okay.
It has a must open date. If we see if today is the valid day of receipt, a must open would be May 4th. So you have a couple of meetings being.
Does everyone feel good about that?
Yeah, you have a meeting on all the way up to May 2nd.
Okay, all right, yeah.
So withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion, withdraw the second. Who had the second?
Like that.
John.
John, you had the second?
No, it was Steve.
Okay, Steve.
John did. I wrote it down.
John did. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 for discussion. Thank you.
Although at one point of verification, do we have to vote to accept the application, even if we're not scheduling a public hearing? Or do we just administratively accept it? Okay.
Yeah, be.
Okay.
Know if we had to take some action because it's on the agenda to, okay, makes sense.
Okay. So John's seconding the table.
Okay, so the motion is Zigma, Mr. Zigma? And the second belongs to Mr. Dyken.
Correct.
And further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay. Now we can go into public hearing.
No.
No, no. What, what? Come on. Killing me over here.
I think this one everyone will be excited about.
All right.
I am. I'm excited to read it.
Oh, let's let's hear it.
So one of the added items, special permit with site plan application of Farmer's Cow Cafe at 1241 Farmington Avenue for a restaurant with drive through and company kitchen at the former Arby's site, property of Horrible Brothers Incorporated. To schedule a public hearing, the suggested date is April 18th.
Oh, wow.
So I will make a motion to schedule it for April 18th.
Okay. We have the motion by Ms. Jersey. We have the second by Mr. Zigma. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved.
What's the name of that restaurant?
Oh, I'm getting round applause again. I do my happy dance.
What's the name of the restaurant?
It's called Farmer's Cow House.
Hey.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah. We're happy.
Public hearing.
Now we're now we're going to go to public hearing, so I'd like to hear that round of applause. All right, okay, okay. I love this group of people. You should come more often. This is fun.
You see the little moo?
Yeah.
That was on the.
Is that what the moo was?
Yeah.
I thought it was that place over by on Fen Road over in the Stop and Shop Plaza. There was a burger place that you went in there and they cooked the burger figure and everyone threw stuff on it. Well, is that what it was called? Well, okay, but no, we're not, we're the wrong moo. Okay, let's move on to have the public.
Oh, my goodness. This is so bad.
I had my coffee. So let's go. There's a baby in the audience. We got it going. Baby on board.
Okay, so the call of the meeting, Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at their regular meeting on Thursday, March 21st, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. Item one, applications of Nicholas Maurizio, care of Colliers International, prepared by attorney Timothy Sullivan at properties owned by 550 554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC in the BT1 Zone for A, application for site plan amendment approval for property at 550 554 Berlin Turnpike. B, two part applications submitted pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section 830G for I text amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations to create a new section, Berlin Turnpike Multi Family Workforce Housing Development. Sorry, that was number one. And two, site plan approval for a multi-family housing development at 522 Berlin Turnpike. Two, zoning map amendment application of Pavan Kumar, member Rajeshwari Realty LLC slash S H R I. slash S H R I Vijal. I can't say this. Vijal Ashmi LLC to change the zone of 1251 Berlin Turnpike. 16-3-138-18A from SPDD to Berlin Turnpike 1 BT1 Zone and 115 Middletown Road. 16-3-138-18 from R15 SPDD overlay to Berlin Turnpike 1 BT1 Zone. In 1309 Berlin Turnpike 16-3-138-1 from R15 to Berlin Turnpike BT1 Zone. The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Remote access to this meeting is available by Zoom video conference and the link is provided and meeting ID. And this was run in the, it was dated the 7th day of March 2024 at Berlin, Connecticut, and run in the New Britain Herald Legal Notices Classified Advertising on Saturday, March 9th and Friday, March 15th, 2024.
And I must say, thank you for reading the notice. Now I know why Brian Rogan.
I know why.
Got on a plane. He did not want to read that. Okay. No, Brian's not here. Okay, on to the public hearing. So first up, we have the special permit with site plan amendment application of David Camacho, Camacho Enterprises LLC to add a proposed automotive used dealer use per the Berlin zoning regulations. 6G 3G and 11R at 86 Woodlawn Road, which is the property of J&amp;S Enterprises Incorporated. It's in the BT1 zone. Okay. Yes.
I think Ms. Joycey has.
Ms. Joycey has something she wants to add about Mr. Camacho's application?
Oh, I will. I'll say, we got an email this afternoon that he is asking to postpone.
Okay. Okay, do we need a?
He's working on some staff comments, concerns and getting, finishing getting some of the data that he hasn't been able to get in time for this meeting.
Okay, do we need a motion postponed?
I don't have a question.
Yeah, what, oh, what? Okay.
Maureen, I went by here and I've already noticed he's already starting to put cars in there in the back of the building. This is the car wash, right? shiny bright. He's already starting to get a nice little collection of cars back there.
Uh-oh.
I drive by them all the time when we have our meeting.
I won't be in the office tomorrow, but maybe Alexa will make a note for Monday. Neither one of us will be there tomorrow. We're both going to Alphabrooks. So I'm on vacation next week, so maybe she'll make a note to either contact the applicant or give it to Holly.
What do you mean vacation? I asked our staff to investigate the, I think it was problem, property next door that we approved, some Ucar sales on, right? There was a lot of stipulations that we put on that piece of property. I want to make sure that same thing happens on this piece of property. So whatever, I remember it was.
Look for their condition.
Parking their, their conditions and make sure they match, you know?
And Ms. Chu, I believe you have a question.
Well, I had a question. Is a public hearing, do we need to recognize any audience member that might have come or?
So the applicant requested to postpone, so we wouldn't be opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Diane.
Maureen, this is the car wash that's on.
This is the car wash site that we are speaking about.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Okay, so we have the motion and we?
There's not a motion, but I'll make one.
Okay, go ahead. I'm just trying to quicken the pace.
Make a motion to postpone item A, special permit with site plan amendment application of David Camacho to April 4th, 2024.
Okay, I'm in motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Vellar, further discussion, all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so moved. On to the zoning map amendment application of Pavan Kumar, member of Raj, oh, boy, okay, I'm sorry, Raj Jar Jeshwari Realty LLC. Vijay Lakshmana LLC to change the zone of 1251 Berlin Turnpike from the SPDD to the Berlin Turnpike BT1 Zone and 190, I'm sorry, 1309 Berlin Turnpike and 115 Middletown Road from the R15 to the Berlin Turnpike 1 BT1 Zone. Okay, all right. Do we have the applicant here or? Okay, oh, Mr. Attorney Pintor. You're seeing him now.
I do have a brief outline.
All right.
I am gonna put up a little map. I don't know if you'll be able to see it.
Does Maureen have it digitally? She could put it up on the screen for everyone? Do I hear some sarcasm?
No.
I'm trying to trust.
Get that out of the way. And this is not going where I want it to. How do I make this smaller? Can I make that smaller? Control. Plus, okay, we'll see if that works. I really want to. Oh, it doesn't matter there anyway. I do control plus on here instead. Well, it didn't like that. Oh, I have to drag down on this instead. There we go. I'm just trying to get rid of that, but that's only on my screen. I didn't realize this was only on my screen. I wasn't, you know. So these three parcels.
Yes.
So if, if I may for everyone. This is the old Loft Candy Factory, the yellow building. This is a white house with pillars in the front that's set back a ways from the road. And this is right on the left side at the intersection as you're coming, as you're facing westbound on Middletown Road at the intersection of the Berlin Turnpike. These are the three properties that are being proposed to be rezoned.
Thank you. I think the Berlin Turnpike properties, I think, always present a little bit of a challenge for the commission in terms of uses, the types of uses that were able to attract have kind of shifted. My client is, or his LLCs do own the ownership interest in those three parcels right now. The one in the triangle, the one furthest south there, used to be for quite a long time, an accountant's office. I believe that they have since moved on. My client has had problems attracting new tenants under the current zone. The old Loft's building, I believe, is in the SPDD zone. The property at Middletown Road at 115 is, is R15 with an SPDD overlay on it. And the old accountant's office, I believe, is also SPDD.
That one's R15.
R15, okay. The, the two main properties we're looking at is the old Loft's building and the house that actually faces Middletown Road. There is a, quite a bit of a strip of land, as you can see, from the Loft's Candy property that kind of goes in front of that property. I think the, the issue here is whenever we have these properties where you've got residential properties nearby on the turnpike. I mean, you always have to worry about how do we protect residential properties from other uses also. In this case, the old Loft's property, the property behind it is owned by the Berlin Land Trust. It's open space. And it's also wetlands. And the wetlands also extend a little bit onto the Loft's Candy property. So from that property, you almost have some natural, natural buffers. The property on Middletown Road, because of the way that that property is situated, the frontage on, the frontage on the turnpike, there's that little strip, and then you've got the house that's currently on Middletown Road. That house has the SPDD overlay on it. Anytime the zoning commission, or any kind of a use that would have to be approved for those properties, where the zone to be changed to BT1 would generally be subject to special permit requirements and also wetlands requirements. And anytime, you know, a commercial zone backs up against the residential zone, there are other buffer requirements in our, in our regulations to protect the residential, the residential properties. You know, we had this issue kind of up and down the turnpike where, you know, BT1, BT2, the BT2 zone has proven to be very difficult to use. The SPDD zone was more when we were talking about developing the Golden Triangle back in those, back in the day. As you can see, nothing ever got developed. It's still a rock pile, but you know, the BT1 zone seems to give us the most flexibility. And my client in the Loft's building is about 50% occupied. He's, he's finding it very difficult to attract, attract businesses in that zone. The SPD zone is very restrictive. And again, I think if you look at the SPD DD zone, it talks about properties that encourage pedestrian access and things like that. Well, obviously, that would be, that would have been the case had there been a larger development around it. That's never happened. And behind, again, behind that Loft's Candy building is property owned by the land trust, which is open space and also wetlands. I think you also have, on the other side of the turnpike, I think there's been some recent zone changes, but also in those properties, you have wetlands kind of behind the area on the front on the turnpike, and that kind of dips down to a little bit of swamp. So there is some, again, natural buffers on that side of the turnpike, which we kind of have on this side of the turnpike. I think the Berlin Turnpike, from the zoning standpoint, has kind of been problematic for us for a long time. You know, we, you know, you have to be mindful of the fact, you do have to protect, you know, the residential properties. But, you know, I would submit there are protections built into the special permit process, you know, traffic studies and the like. There are some natural buffers that are built into the land on these properties. And there are additional buffers that are required when the commercial, commercial zone backs up against the residential zone. And we are talking about the Berlin Turnpike, trying to attract, make it more attractive, make it more attractive to businesses. The way properties were developed on the turnpike years ago is not the way they're developed now. Obviously, they're much more orderly. You know, when we take into account buffers, we take into account wetlands, design, traffic flows. Even if that property on the Berlin Turnpike was to be developed, there generally would not be any exit onto Middletown Road. There's a, there's a curve there. You, it's, it's a blind curve and you, any access, future access to that property would have to be in and off the Berlin Turnpike. So in short, our argument is that we're trying to make these properties more attractive to track tenants. And I think you've seen that because other people have asked for changes to BT1 on the other side of the turnpike. I believe the property where the Dunkin' Donuts has been changed, a few other places they've been changed, just. And then some of those places, you do have residential properties where it backs up. Unfortunately, that's how Berlin kind of got developed. You go into Newington, they have large plots of land before you get to the residential areas and you don't have that, you know, that enundrum of what do you, how do you protect the residential properties? This property does allow some natural buffers without even going to the special permit process, which would be required for the most part anyway. In short, that's why we're asking for it to be, to be changed to the BT1. Not so much the old property in the triangle there. We're primarily concerned with the old Loft's property and the property at 115 Middletown Road because that essentially gives some depth off the turnpike. You know, the property at, I believe it's 1309 Berlin Turnpike, the old accountant's office really isn't going to help. That's not contiguous. It's separated by Middletown Road at this point. We're just trying to, we found that the, from a business standpoint, the SPDD zones have been very restrictive and have been very difficult to attract tenants and attract businesses to these properties. And that's essentially why we're requesting the zone changed to the BT1.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question. Where the Loft Candy Store was or whatever, how, how large is that parcel?
It's about two acres. Yeah, it's, I have a, I have the assessment.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
I mean, just.
2.6.
So that's 2.
Part of it, part of it is encumbered by some wetlands behind the building.
Okay.
Which also extends out to the Berlin Land Trust open space parcel. It's directly behind it.
And is that property connected to the White House with the pillars? It's hard to tell with the map here.
Contiguous.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and how large?
Strip, I'm sorry. There's that little strip of land that kind of sticks out to Middletown Road. The White House with the pillars is just behind that little strip. If you can see that little strip. I'm not sure why.
So it parallels the turnpike, the little strip? Okay. And how many acres in the White House with the pillars?
That's just over an acre.
So if it's a, so we'll call it like 1.1?
Yeah, it's 1.08, yeah, 1.08.
Okay.
I think those two parcels combined give you about three and a half acres.
Okay.
Three and a half acre site.
Now, the house sits in the triangle that has a shared driveway to the back, right? Correct? The, the southerly park? Okay. Oh, okay, all righty. Only because we can't, you can't take your testimony yet, but the, thank you.
I'm gonna suggest I'll stop sharing this screen and pull up the aerial view.
Okay. Well, either way, I'm just trying to get an assessment of, because I do know that there is a driveway and it sort of goes back and then, so who does that driveway belong to? Does it, is it, is it a shared driveway? Is it belong to the house in back?
Well, the, you mean where the accountant's office used to be?
Yes.
I don't know if it's shared. Is that shared?
126 Middletown Court.
Where the accountant's office used to be?
It's right off the turnpike. There's a.
There's a driveway into the parking lot off the turnpike, and I believe there's a driveway into.
Into, it goes up.
Also.
Yeah, it goes, goes up.
I see where you're talking about. There is access from Middletown Road.
That's, that's actually a street.
That's, that's actually a street.
That is a street.
That is a street?
Court.
I drove it.
Middletown Court, okay.
There today.
Seriously? All right, all right. Thank you very much, even though I'm not supposed to take testimony from the public. Okay, not yet.
26 Middletown Court.
126 Middletown Court.
And no one knows that.
I hope the postman does. Yeah. Okay. And, and how, how large is that parcel, that triangle piece there?
Angle piece is, it's 0.37 acres, but it's not contiguous to the other two. I think it's always probably been non-conforming. It's been mostly.
Yeah, it's 0.37 acres, so it's, okay. All right, okay. All right, thank you for that information. Just curious.
Down here that we're talking about the road.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the Middletown Court. I know that one now.
It is.
Okay.
Got Middletown Court address, but.
Okay. Any other questions at this time from the commission?
I don't have the street map with me to know whether or not it's an official road at this time, or it was a abandoned or something. I don't.
Might have been abandoned.
That's the first that, that name has come up to me. So I didn't investigate that.
Thought years ago, but the application was never worked on. I thought there was a gun, a gun ownership that was going to go in there. Specialized.
Off the street.
You know, I, for some reason, I think that we're going to do sales of that house. Actually, I think they got a permit. I mean, they were ATF or whatever.
There was a proposal. I think it's maybe for the.
But this was a long time ago.
Sure.
I don't know. All right. I'm just curious because obviously we're looking at three pieces of, three pieces of property. And we have neighbors that are in the residencies there. And, and they're not large parcels. So I, I'm, I'm thinking that the intention is to obviously join the old Loft Candy with the White House with the pillars to do something there. And that just, you know, and, and that seems reasonable, however. I have to look at the established residency there and how it's going to impact. And, and I have to give that a weighted consideration. You know, I, I don't want to, don't want to deny anyone the use of the property, but we have to be respectful of the neighbors.
You know, unfortunately, some of those details would be worked out in a special permit.
Yeah, that's if, if the, yeah, yeah, that's if it's approved. All right, questions from the commission before I go to staff and then go to the public?
Can I, maybe you can clarify something for me in the morning. We went through this on the other side of the highway, so I could give my thing, but SPDD. And then with the BT1, now they're, they were very similar, except one allowed some other items to be done on a BT1 zone than a SPDD. So can, can you specify what's the difference of those two zones?
Because. The SPDD Regional Center, that's the SPDD zone, which is what includes the, what'd you say it was? What kind of candy?
Lofts.
Lofts factory, the previous utilized Lofts building. Yeah. But I've heard, I learned that when I first started here, so clearly it's stuck, right? Now I learned a new road, yeah. So the, the purpose of the Special Design District, to accommodate unified, well-planned, mixed-use development that offers a high intensity of uses consistent with the area capacity and environmental conditions, is pedestrian-friendly, will create a favorable image of the community, and will make a strong contribution to the local and regional economy, and serve as a regional activity center. The uses that are listed are a list of A through G, special permit uses. And those are the following principal uses permitted in the SPD, subject to special permit and site plan approvals, blah, blah, blah. Retail uses, including shopping malls, provided that no retail establishment occupy over 50,000 square feet of building area, except if included within a shopping mall, blah, blah, blah. B doesn't exist, that was removed. C, general businesses, medical and professional offices, hotels with a minimum of 100 rooms, restaurants, including drive-through, banks and financial and indoor commercial recreation facilities when part of a shopping center. And then there's permitted uses, et cetera. That's the SPDD zone. So general business and medical and professional offices is the most general commercial kind of provision there. The, the overlay is to provide for additional area for development of a regional mixed-use commercial center. So those parcels that are in the overlay can be incorporated into the SPDD zone. And that's what this, right here on the map, is that parcel at 115 Middletown Road. And so that's part of the overlay that should someone come to develop a regional center in this zone up here, they could incorporate that parcel as part of it. So then that would then fit under those provisions.
The overlay.
115 Middletown is in that overlay. I'm just making, because of the nuances of the three different SPDs, I wanted to make sure I was reading the right one. Sorry for that. I am sorry that you just received your staff comments on this. And we're glad at the appropriate time to do a quick summary of them, of the comments we have so far. Should you determine that you're keeping this item open, it's likely we provide, we may provide additional comments. However, I think they're pretty, I, I think we pulled them together pretty well. Alexa worked really hard on a good portion of them.
Bill.
Be, so many BT1 uses fall under site plan uses as opposed to special permit uses. So the stores and shops for the conduct of retail businesses, except motor vehicle, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing a couple of these for generality. General business, medical or professional offices, so that again, is, those are both basically special permit uses in the SPDD. Banks, including drive-through and drive, drive-in and drive-through establishments. So again, banks and financial is in the SPDD as well. Restaurants, banquet halls, or other places serving food and beverage. Restaurants excluding drive-through restaurants is in the SPDD. So the drive-through is, although drive-through is not, oh, drive-through is special permit in the, in the BT1, I think. Let me get there. Stores and shops for the conduct of personal or business services, and that was an amendment to the BT1 reg, so you do allow that now. And that was at the behest of the owner of this building, the commercial building a number of years ago. Indoor motion picture theaters, manufacturer showrooms, and product distribution centers, caterers and bakeries. And again, that's in the printed version of the book. I didn't bring, I, this one doesn't have the amendments in it. So there may be a couple more BT1 uses, but I don't think so. And then special permit uses are actually A through at least DD at this time. So that's 20, that's 30 uses right now listed. I could list those if you'd like, but I won't go through it if you don't. The special permit uses include site plan uses in excess of 5,000 square feet, indoor commercial, indoor or outdoor commercial recreation facilities, health and fitness, motor vehicle uses, hospitals, public transportation, auto dealers, and other auto uses. And there's a couple of categories that deal with auto uses in different ways, transportation, adult daycare centers, medical or dental labs, animal hospitals, broadcast facilities, nurseries and garden centers, lumberyards, public schools, libraries, post offices, drive-in, drive-throughs, drive-ins. Again, we already mentioned those as being special permit. Amusement facilities, religious, charitable, and Ellis Seminary.
Eliomassinary.
Elyomass, yeah, okay. I've listened to the lady on Google tell me at least a dozen times. I can't get. Yeah. Those institutions, storage facilities, childcare centers. Again, I think we, that was one that was amended as well for the SPDD, or some form, no, the schools. It was in schools. It had schools. And I'm sorry, I don't have that amendment in front of me. Hotels, motels, manufacturing, printing and publishing, public utilities, car washes, and vocational schools for profit. Liquor sales, well, that's, would be anyhow. But it was still, it would be a special permit of the, yeah, but that's by ZBA.
I. Well, I think the SPD, the SPDD zones, and we're mostly designed for larger regional centers. It talks like, you know, pedestrian-friendly and things like that. So it's really not talking about what we usually have on the Berlin Turnpike. It's talking about the Golden Triangle and, and the area around it. No. Yeah, yeah. In actuality, been very difficult, if not impossible, to do at most of these properties.
Okay, well, all righty. Terrific. And I think what we're going to do, unless the commission has any pressing questions, yes, John?
I have one question. I noticed that for 1309, there's a, it's been traditionally a non-conforming historical use of office space. Is there office space currently there, or is it just residential?
It's empty right now.
Oh, it's empty, okay.
It's empty.
Okay, so it wouldn't even be continuing non-conforming use?
Well, unless you abandon the non-conforming use, that's sometimes a question of law. But if you don't, I mean, if you put a residence in there, you would be abandoned. If you're holding it open and trying to get another office use in there, you still, it would still be non-conforming.
Would that office use be, be permitted under the BT1?
I believe it would be, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it'd still be non-conforming. It would still, yeah.
In, in other words, let's say it was constructed now under the BT1. Could you, my, my point is, would it be consistent with the BT1?
I believe professional offices are, are allowed in that zone, yeah. I mean, medical and dental. Let's see. I believe, I believe some of these are permitted uses. General business, general business, medical or professional offices are permitted use, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I clarify that? So it's my understanding from the zoning perspective that the continued office use is, you know, somebody came in, even though it's been vacant, with a commercial use that hasn't been superseded for that office use, and if it was not changing it in some other way, as long as it was consistent with the non-conformity, it would continue to be allowed at this time.
Even though it's been vacant? Okay.
Even though it's been vacant.
Uh, thank you.
If they were to, if the zone was to change to allow office uses, then it would become a conforming office use. And if the zone was to change again, I don't know that it would be allowed to.
Right.
That house is written out as a resident.
It changed what it was.
They would break the non-conformity.
Correct.
Thank you.
Terrific. Well, this is the public hearing. We are in public hearing. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to ask the folks who want to address the commission regarding this application, whether it be pro or con, to please step up, state your name and address for the record, and then share your thoughts and comments about this suggestion. Okay, great. All right.
My name is Rob Cohen. I live on 139. I live directly next door.
To. All right, which, can you?
On Middletown Road, so the house that you're talking about, the White House?
The ones with the pillar?
I have the fence, so if you drive up the road, on the second house that's on the left, so they.
Oh, okay.
The second.
Okay.
His house right here.
Okay.
Correctly identifying.
Oh, all right.
So I, I could sit here and talk about why personally, like, it's going to affect the costing of the homes and my kids and the property and all that. But I think the main focus is our town. As you drive down the road, I called the police department to kind of get an idea of what we're looking at. So over the past two years, 55 car accidents of some type have happened on that corner. So now we're going to add, so that's one every 13 days. So now we're going to add businesses to that corner on top of what we already have. So I see fire trucks buzz down my road for safety all day through my road. I'm there all day. That's why I work. Okay, I work.
So wipe your body down. It's over there in the corner.
Okay, so I.
No, don't say.
I see.
I'm sorry.
Police Department, they're all buzzing through that road. That's the crossroad. There is traffic backed up on this road.
Yeah.
To an extent that is so dangerous. I can't even get out of where I live to go left or right without praying. I can't get my mail. Okay, the property, the way that it sets up now is dirty. It is trash. You look from my window down, it is a dump. Okay, I've asked them to clean this property up for years. They, they offered to buy my home on less pricing sometimes, just to get me out of here. Okay, they have offered to buy it before. This is about the town and being safe. And traffic coming through here is so dangerous. I'm not going to keep going on my personal reasons. It's really about car accident, safety, and death. All right, I watch every day. And if anybody here is driven down that road, you all know I'm telling the truth. Okay, if you add businesses to that corner, a strip mall, knock it down, we're all in trouble there. Okay, and I hope none of you have to make the call if anyone dies. Okay, it's serious what's happening here. Okay? All right, so as far as anything else, I'm not going to keep going on that. But this is a police orderly town thing for safety. And if any of you live on this road and had kids, you would be really nervous too. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay. All righty. Next up, I think your, the queue is over here, right? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Let me just sign in.
Go right ahead.
Chris Cody, 187 Middletown Road. You should have consulted me because I have lived on Middletown Road for 63 years.
Wow.
It's my parents' home, and they bought it in 1955, and four generations of my family have lived at 187. I just have some rhetorical questions. The gentleman before me answered the question on the number of accidents in the past year at that intersection of Middletown Road and the Berlin Turnpike. We all know Middletown Road is the connector between 372 and Route 5 and 15. Has there been a traffic study done on Middletown Road? I don't know if the commission is aware, but there is a no-through truck sign on each end of Middletown Road. And no less than a half a dozen 18-wheelers come from either direction on a daily basis. It got so bad that my wife, coming home from work one day, a few weeks ago, watched an 18-wheeler make the turn from the turnpike down Middletown Road and almost hit the no-through truck sign.
Yikes.
So the traffic on the street is unbearable as it is. On at least five days during the week, the traffic up Middletown Road from 372 backs up, I would say, on average, five days a week. And the only thing some neighbors and I can figure is there must be a traffic app on the smartphones that tells them when Route 9 is backed up. And it's a constant parade of slow-moving traffic over the weekend, lasted for a total of two hours. So trying to get up Middletown Road from 372 is a nightmare. I don't know if anyone has surveyed the number of young children on Middletown Road, but just in the 18. but just in the eighteen houses I counted alone, there are a total of roughly twenty-three young children under the age of sixteen. That's not counting Renee Drive, Highview Terrace, and the properties at Knollwood, that private development. Um, the speed of the vehicles, I mean, what could I say? The speed limit was thirty miles per hour. For whatever reason, they upped it, uh, on the lower part of Middletown Road for thirty-five miles an hour. As the gentleman before me said, you literally take your life in your hands crossing the street to get your mail. Um, just checking my notes here.
Take your time.
I think that's about it. I mean, I don't think there's been any kind of study of the traffic, the families, the impact, and I think, I don't want to speak for anybody else on the street, but those of us that live there have coked with these traffic backups, the speed, being careful to cross the street to get your mail. Any kind of development other than what's there already. And when I was a kid, the house on the triangle, it was actually an antique shop. Mom and pop lived on the second floor. Um, the antique store was on the first floor. The house on the corner with the pillars belonged to Hattie Paul, the matriarch of Paul Welding in Newington, her son Ziegfried, I see, uh, and Loft Candy is the reason for this right. I delivered the newspapers as a kid, and they always had free samples.
Oh, wonderful.
Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. I hope you do not approve zone change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
If anyone else is gonna be talking, um, just sort of by this young lady here, just queue up. All right, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Adrian Cruz, living two eight zero Middletown Road. My house at that bottom of the, on the hill, past Renee Drive. We have the big U-shaped driveway. So I'll comment on what he said earlier about the traffic backup. On a regular basis, five days a week, it goes past my house through the little bridge by the land trust. And because of that, people use our driveway as a turnaround. I have small children, another one on the way. My neighbor has two small children, also in elementary school. They cannot play in the front yard. You go up to our mailbox, run over our traffic cans that are in my driveway, run through my yard and over the curb on a regular basis. Our friends who are in law enforcement, they let me borrow one of their radar guns. On a regular weekend, you can fly a hundred forty miles an hour at the end of that straightaway. I mean, it's, it's to a point where I went and get LPL camera on my actual mailbox to record the amount of traffic on that road. Just from the speeding alone, at over a hundred miles an hour on a regular basis. My kids almost hit in my driveway, hit my property on a regular basis, before anything's even done as far as the development in the street. Someone drove into that small house in that triangle, at Middletown Court, I believe it is, and it's on a non-busy day. Imagine what happens if you change the zoning to have more stores, retail markets, whatever you're gonna have at that corner, before you do anything else that has, that makes the traffic we're doing right now. I've been there for about eighteen months. I have never once seen an officer running radar, pulling anybody over. The last time I saw an officer was once when someone drove into the, I guess, the marsh that's there. The car was so far into the marsh, they had to get a tow truck pulled out of the mud. You couldn't even see off the road. So to have someone change the zoning in that area, and the town does nothing to mitigate the traffic as it is right now, so, so with the gentleman said earlier about it being dangerous, someone's gonna die. And honestly, it feels like we need one, my kids, or my neighbors' kids. You go down that hill from towards Renee Drive, it's, oh, it's a launching pad, because beyond our houses, it's a long street for almost a mile. It's ridiculous. If I knew it was that bad, I would never move from North Haven to Berlin. It's ridiculous. You know, I feel bad for the officer. When I talk to the officer, it's like, well, it's that way all over town. Well, then unfortunately, get a traffic enforcement officer. Figure something else to give me. I'm sorry, I can't really do anything about it. It's honestly ridiculous. Not trying to be, you know, facetious or aggressive, but I have a, a small child on the way. I have two kids now to go to Hubbard. They can't play in their front yard. People use my driveway every day as a turnaround spot. Now, I can't put any barriers up because if I damage someone's car, I'm liable. If something happens to them and their car is damaged, if they pull out and get into an accident, I'm liable. I lose my home and all my livelihood. That's not okay. So what's the town gonna do to manage the traffic we have currently? Forget that traffic study, deal with what you have now. Nothing is done. It is extremely aggravating that nothing is done. I've called, I've talked to officers in person, and their hands are tied. They have a radar gun, sit where the land trust starts, at a little bridge, you'll get a hundred kids a day. There has, there has to be something done to protect not only our town, that area, the residents who buy houses here, and just to, just have it be a safe environment. That's not okay. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Good, good. My name is Jennifer Jordan, and I live, uh, off of, uh, Middletown Road on eighty-six Walden Court. Um, we moved twenty-one years ago, uh, to Walden Court because it was a cul-de-sac, and at the time I had small children. Uh, where they, um, and, and I see a lot of my neighbors out here tonight, we would have, um, block parties where the kids could ride their bikes around the circle, back and forth, up and down. It was a great place to raise them. Um, we decided on Walden Court for many reasons. Uh, one was to be close to areas and restaurants, and my family, I was born and raised in Newington, so, um, being around them was, was a positive. That now, um, with what's going on, uh, for the proposal to convert residential to zoning, uh, I am, I, I myself, my husband, and my two children are adamantly, um, opposed to it. Like anything, I'm in the, I'm a facilities manager, so I, um, am very aware of what commercial properties can and cannot do, and what they bring. They bring dumpsters, they bring mice and rats. Um, you have to have poles at a certain height and, and certain candle lights and, and how bright they are in the evening. Um, again, if you go down, uh, Middletown Road and you try to take a left into Walden Court or a right, at any time past three thirty in the afternoon, you're waiting with your blinker on in order to get to your home. I can see it, I just can't get to it. Um, I tell my kids, they've been driving for a few years now, both of them, but I tell them, please do not go out to the left. Number one, you can't get out that way. Um, when we were practicing driving with them, my son by accident took a left many years ago, and a guy just came up and laid on his horn for twenty minutes. My son then didn't want to drive for another three months. Wasn't a, a bad thing, because we had to work on driving, but we have to go out to the right and go all the way around. And when I'm trying to run errands in town, that's, you know, it's a pain. It really is. Um, I just think that anything that is brought into that area that then takes, uh, away from the cost of what we could turn around and sell our homes, where everybody knows right now the real estate market is absolutely booming, and it's a great thing, and we're looking at our homes and, and saying, wow, this is what we can get, and then on top of that, you can get fifty, sixty thousand more dollars than that right now. You deem these homes into commercial, I personally would not with young children. Look at my home, no matter how much I liked the neighborhood and how much I liked the house, I would never buy if there was to be deemed my plot of land as commercial rather than residential. So I agree with everybody who got up here and spoke. I'm not gonna reiterate all over, but I agree with everything that they said, and we are, we are absolutely opposed to it. Thank you very much.
How you doing? David Card, two oh three Middletown Road. Um, you know, once again, I, I, I could say everything that, everything, everyone else has said. Traffic's horrible, um, you know. He was talking about the, the buffer zone. Um, now, there's, there's not, there, there's always gonna be a first house, whether it be, uh, a residential house, whether it be a commercial property. Now, there's, there's not really any buffer zone. And the second you start rezoning residential properties, all right, now that's your new line. Well, then what happens when someone buys that next property? Then they wanna push it, and they're gonna push it and push it and push it until there's no, you know, until it's just another Berlin Turnpike. Um, a lot of people have talked about, about Middletown Road being used as the thruway. Yes, there is no trucks, no through truck signs on both sides, uh, and yet, every day, now, five days a week might be a little bit of an exaggeration. I'd say at least three, three days a week, including the weekends, traffic's backed up. We're at two oh three, so we're right at the crest of the hill, and traffic is backed up past our house. Um, you know, if you, if you now put two businesses at the end of the street that have entrances on Middletown Road, that's just gonna compound it tenfold. You know, there's, there's no reason why, why those need to be, need, there's no reason why they need to be zoned, um, business instead of residential. Um, I, I don't know if anyone else has brought it up, but there was actually a car that went through one of the houses, uh, what was it? A year ago, less than a year ago.
They go right into the br- yeah.
Yeah. So that, that tells you how fast people are not only going down the hill, but also coming back and obviously not paying attention. Now, so now, once again, you're just gonna add more traffic to an already really bad situation. Uh, and, you know, the, the, as the gentleman said a couple before me about people hitting hundred, hundred and forty miles an hour at the bottom of the hill, I can one hundred percent attest to that. I've seen people doing seventy-five going by my house, and then you count to two, and they're already on the straightaway. So the fact that I, it, like I said, I could sit here, there, there's really, we can sit here and, and just spout off all these, all these things about how bad Middletown Road is in terms of traffic. Uh, but it's, it's really gonna be up to you guys. Um, one, one other thing that I would, I would like to point out is that, um, the Berlin Turnpike Zone One, that they're trying, that they would like it to go to, does have a minimum uh, acreage requirement of two acres. So, you know, anything that goes into there would already need a, a special variance just on the acreage. You know, so I, looking at, looking at the other commercial and business classes that Berlin has, you know, it, I find it odd that that's the one that they're going for. Especially these properties, this area of the Turnpike, there's not pedestrian traffic. You know, you would, you have to have some kind of a parking lot. Uh, and the, the candy building is the only building that would have a substantial enough parking lot for, you know, any kind of customers. Um, so, I'm against this as well as everybody else in our area. I urge you to please, please deny this request. Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah. That's just for the recording secretary. Once she goes to transcribe, then she knows how to spell your name and kind of you. So say your name clearly for the record.
My name is Mark Howard, and I reside at, uh, forty Walden Court for about eight-plus years now. Formerly from Farmington my whole life. Um, contract, worked for a contractor, I'm a contractor builder, and some of the things people said here, I was a firefighter for twenty years in AMT in Farmington. And, uh, so I, I really thought it was wonderful what some of the neighbors said, and I would say that everything they said regarding safety, speeding, cars, traffic, the danger of the intersection, the danger of pulling out of our street, Walden Court onto Middletown Avenue, in any direction or any time, probably one of the most dangerous areas, including the intersection on Berlin Turnpike, so much so, anybody that comes to visit me, I tell them, don't trust the lights. You can't trust the lights. If you trust the lights, you're playing Russian roulette, because so many trucks and vehicles blow through those lights. It's dangerous. But that, 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 that exists today. I think it's worse since the COVID happened. People are driving differently, in my personal opinion, and you have to be a defensive driver. But it's, it's scary. My kids are grown. You all talk about your children. My God. I'm, my God, what is more important than those kids? So then you talk about our properties, and, and then some of the, one of the gentlemen wasn't gonna talk about his personal uh, properties, but I, I, I look at, when I was looking to move there, I thought it was a beautiful neighborhood. Close to work, I lived in Farmington, took me a half an hour to get to work. I can be in Farmington in fifteen minutes to my office, and I do it every day. Part of the negative part was the area around the Berlin Turnpike, frankly. Growing up in Connecticut my whole life, I've watched it evolve. Watching Berlin evolve today. I think towns are doing a really good job. It, it's getting it right in the downtown, and it's great to see it growing. But commercial development has to be done correctly. And two of the properties are R fifteen. One of them has a special DD on it, which is the one in the hatch mark there. I think that's kinda interesting. So that must have happened at some point in time. So I'm gonna get into, actually, what I, what I would think is, I'm totally against, totally against for, I'll, I'll, I'll close with that. I'm totally against, uh, these properties being rezoned. Uh, and I'm sorry for the owner who owns them and wants to do this, has nothing, speculatively has nothing personally against the owner of the property. It, it has nothing to do with that, but it has to do with numerous residents that live all around it, and also the residents that don't know anything about this that live there. Because I live within four hundred feet. I, I, I'm the closest property on Walden Court to two of the properties. If the zoning map's correct, I pulled the measurement off, it was four hundred feet. I didn't know anything about this. One of my neighbors gave me a heads up, and that's why I'm here. Um, we talked about, uh, traffic, talked about dumpsters, we talked about noise. I don't know if we talked too much about it, but we, we didn't talk about noise, we didn't talk about light pollution, which is a big problem for me. As I look at the Berlin Turnpike, as everybody does that is on the west side of Walden Court, when the leaves fall off, right? Can't deal with the noise so much, but from November all the way until May, yeah, it, it could be a little tough. And no matter what, if these were turned into commercial properties, no matter what stipulations, someone would have to have to develop the properties or be required to do, I can't see any positive coming to me and my property and other people. And I would say that it's great that young lady brought up how everybody's property is worth more. Well, that's gonna change. It's like we know, it's gonna come back down, unfortunately. And your taxes will get adjusted, and, and that just happens, but having commercial properties right next to residential properties doesn't raise a value. I can't tell you any place that I've ever seen that happen. We build all over New England and the whole state of New York. Um, it's great for people that wanna build commercial stuff, not good for people that live there usually. Um, I can't, I'll just pick up a couple more points, and I'm gonna close. Um, so one hundred percent against this. I would say that the commission, I'm hoping that you deny these applications as they stand. And as far as the property that is SPDD that used to be Loft, which I remember that name now, um, probably drove by it years ago, uh, I would say if they wanted to ever do anything there, I would make it conditional that the triangle at R fifteen, since they own it, it's donated to the town for a park that nobody can go on, but they make it a nice place. There's no reason to have a little business on that. And the present property that's R fifteen that has the SPDD, that that zoning goes back to residential. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Hey, I just, I just have a question. Maureen, when it comes to notification of, um, zone changes, there's a certified letter that has to be mailed out to the.
Done by certificate of mailing, and I don't know if anybody noticed, but that's what I was just double-checking. Um, if you recall, that's why this item was originally postponed. Um, if you recall, that's why this item was originally postponed because the, they hadn't initially done their notice correctly. And it got postponed to this meeting, um, if I remember correctly, but I just checked and, but we, we got the certificate of mailing. Um, they have to submit. They bring the list to the post office with the stack of letters and a list and the post office stamps it as stack of letters is the same as the list, like they've checked each name, make sure it's on the list. Each letter back and forth and then the post office stamps each sheet.
Okay.
All the people that, and that's the list generated. Generally, the list is generated from the assessor's office. Uh, it has an automated radius that it gets
Okay, and, and I think you know why I'm asking that question.
He just said he didn't get it.
He didn't get one.
And, and we do have that he, that, um, I checked all the names, so I believe his last name was Howard.
Howard, Mark Howard on Walden Court.
So it says it went to one thirty-nine Melrose Road East Windsor, which must be the, the address of record on the land records for the owner of the property. So that's where it would have gone to.
Okay, so it went to?
It goes per the assessor's card. So the person, like you can't know who lives in every house. So you go to the assessors, yeah, where you get
But wouldn't that a home?
Assessor's card and the assessor's card lists the mailing address. That's where their tax bill goes. That's where the town's official address to contact the owner of the property is on the assessor's card with a mailing address.
But if a, if a person had a, and this is just so I understand. So if a person has a mortgage on a property and lives in a property, that would normally be their mailing address, right? Unless they had like a local post office.
It goes to the address that they have have asked that their mail goes to by the town.
So in other words, like I might live on Walden Court, but I might have a post office box number in town.
And it, and it might If you registered it that way with the assessor's office, then
Okay.
It would go to your post office box instead.
Okay.
If you rent your house, it goes to you where you want the letter to go, the
Yeah.
Any information on your property to go to, not to you, to the tenant.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that
They're also required to put signs up on the property and I understand they did.
Well, okay, all right, okay.
Know that I have the proof of that, but
All right.
But I know we did get calls that there were
Okay, I just want to make sure that, okay.
And that is also something very important to put on the record that um, they, we do know that the public is well aware of this application.
Okay. All right, thank you for the information.
Hello, everyone. My name's Joseph Ferrone. I reside at one fifty-two Middletown Road. Little backstory on me, I um grew up on Farmington Avenue, um, on the stretch where Seymour Road splits with Farmington Avenue. So I understand how commercial properties terrible at public speaking. I'm a corrections officer, so I'm going to be talking to inmates, telling inmates what to do.
You're used to yelling at people, right? Go ahead and yell at us. Get it out. Yeah.
Yeah. So I I grew up in that house till I was twenty-two years old. Um, it was a large, it's, it still is a large um commercial property, central pizza, it's the liquor store, it's everything, country farms, if anyone was wrong for that, which was amazing. Um, so I personally understand that. I moved to Bristol for four years because I couldn't afford Berlin. When I was able to afford Berlin, I moved back with my, I'm getting emotional, sorry, with my wife and at the time, my one-year-old daughter. Uh, she's now five and I have a um eighteen-month-old daughter as well. I live directly across the street from Mr. Cohen. Um, I'm at, when you come up from the turnpike, I'm the second, second or third, whatever, how you want to call it, house on the right. I knew what I was getting into moving on Middletown Road because I grew up in this town my entire life. Uh, my wife didn't and she's adapting. She grew up in Fairfield County, which is very different. I am a hundred percent against changing the house with the white pillars from R fifteen to anything. I don't understand it. There's only one egress from it and it would be detrimental to everyone on the street, but mostly I think the four or five houses that are right there, let alone the person that's on Middletown Court. I don't know the long game that the property owner has. I like where the old candy building was or old candy store was. It um, it's aesthetically pleasing to me. I don't, not talking about the property itself, just it's a yellow building. It's nice. It's not extremely commercialized. I wasn't planning on talking tonight either.
You're doing great.
Thanks. Um, that's just my spiel. I, the traffic I know is terrible. And I just feel for my neighbors. I feel for myself, obviously, because you know, every, I'm sure you guys are on Facebook, Berlin Buzz, and you see the comments that are brought up. Oh, just buy another house, just move. I can't. I can get a, I can get a lot of money for the house, but where am I going to go?
Yeah.
I, I knew what I did. I knew the box that I was getting into. Not if this changes. This changes. I, like I said, I don't know the long game and that's scary. My kids are young. I'm established here. My wife works right down the street in Newington. I work for the state. I just would hope that I know Mr. Pantor, um, good guy. Um, I would just hope that it wouldn't be a legal battle because it's just unfortunate. Like gentleman said before, Berlin, and I'm not patting you guys on the back, Berlin is doing a much better job now than I feel like they did the last twenty, thirty years with Farmington Avenue and the whole bungalow thing tonight. We don't need another Dunkin'. We don't need another used car lot. We don't need another gas station. There's one across the street and it's a dump and no one even uses it. I just hope it's considered to shut this down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. All right. Yep, sure. That's what the public hearings for. We want to take testimony from you. Okay, so you're going to try to print? No, you're going to, you're just be terrible.
Carrie Sassu, sixty-nine Walden Court. And um, I just want to start by saying I empathize with a business owner wanting to change the zoning here. However, um, I would encourage you to consider how prioritizing sort of the, the commercial interests of you might outweigh the um interests of the personal interests of many residents. Um, folks have said, and I'll just sort of echo some of that, the, the traffic on Middletown Road and especially coming out um, and where the folks have really, uh, you know, the folks from this end of Middletown Road, I guess, have um spoken, but coming down our road, I'll just speak from Walden Court. When you get to the end of Walden Court, there is a crest of the hill that you barely notice until someone is right up on you as you turn out of there. And there is a um, a blind corner. When that um car hit the brick, the, the white building, my son and my husband were the last car at the light just prior. So my husband was one of the people calling EMS and attending to the guy in the car. Um, that was very scary. Um, but that is kind of what, when we come down Middletown Road, I mean Walden Court onto Middletown Road, it was really difficult. Increasing the traffic there, it can't be overemphasized, the dangers that present there. And not just on the turnpike, but Middletown Road. So increasing the traffic there is really something. Um, Mark spoke to the um potential problems of additional light pollution and noise pollution, which in my sort of anecdotal, uh, from my anecdotal evidence, um, has only increased in the sixteen years that I've lived on Walden Court. And uh, I would really prefer that that not change. The other piece that people have already spoken to is uh sort of devaluing, devaluing or lessening um the value of our residential properties by adding commercial properties in close proximity to such. I do want to um ask for clarification because there was a point made and I looked to some of my neighbors that we were noticed. I have one residence, so I can't imagine where, to where that letter was sent for me. I'm sixty-nine Walden Court. Do you verify that?
Was Walden Court?
Again, um, it's been shown, so we will check, but they did submit that and we, we have it and it's pages long. Um, but it has been um well-established in um zoning challenges that if an owner does find, or someone that should have been noticed is at the hearing and they got noticed that the courts have found, well, you got noticed, you got here. You know, that's not necessarily an issue for um, and I, I will say not necessarily because
Sure.
everything changes with everything, but that that is um possibly not something that would be held up in challenge. Um, however, this has called to our attention to double-check the list, make sure we have at least the right number of people. It's very onerous for five hundred feet to check each name and address.
I get it. I was just looking to other neighbors um spoke before me and we were all kind of looking puzzled at one another.
Can you tell me your address again?
Sixty-nine Walden Court, Carrie Sassu.
Actually, your last name is Sassu.
Sassu, okay. I'll look. Keep going and I'll just go through the list as I can.
Then we'll check anybody else. Um, but I don't think it necessarily has to be done during
Well, I believe that, well, yeah, the
Just stop them and make sure that
Yeah, it just seems that Walden Court seems to be the the, the one that are, that are having issues. That's okay. All right. No, no, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Uh, my name is William Casano and I live at one thirty-six Middletown Road. And if you may know it as the Timothy Hubbard House, built in seventeen thirty-five.
Yeah.
And as I come up that crest to my home, there is a blind curb there, which is very treacherous. I am currently missing probably almost a six-foot piece of my curbing. I don't know where that has gone to. I, I don't. I'm mainly up here to support my community as well. They've all spoken very well and I agree with absolutely everything they say. And I have witnessed many accidents at that corner of Middletown Road and the Berlin Turnpike with crashes that are shattering. I mean, you would just, how anybody survive some of those, I, I don't know. When my guests come to my home, when they leave, the last thing I say to them, every guest, when you're at that light, do not pull out. There is a second seven, ten-second rule that I give them. You sit right there and you wait because the way things are today with people driving, they blow through those lights. They don't care if it's red, yellow, it could be purple, it could be blinking, it doesn't matter. They blow right through it and I've witnessed it from my house. I have a clear view right down to there. And it, and it's frightening. And the day that that woman or whoever was driving into the house next to me, which is directly to my left and that little triangle, was, was pretty scary stuff. And they come around that corner very, very quickly and as far as the traffic goes, Sunday afternoons especially, and I don't know what it is, that traffic is backed up from the Berlin Turnpike all the way to three seventy-two. And I don't know what causes it or why that happens. I don't know if it's the church or I, I'm not quite sure. But I myself will turn right to go wherever I'm going. No one's going to let you pull out left, so. Um, also, I, I want to say that I was here a year or so ago because uh there was a zoning issue uh with the little car dealership that was opening up. And my concern then was that there was a gas, there is a gas station heading south on the Berlin Turnpike on the right-hand side. Don't recall the name of it because I don't frequent it, but they remodeled it, did new tanks, new, new things. That gentleman has the most glaring lights you could possibly imagine in his window, framing the window. My daughter had come to visit with my grandchildren and you look out my bedroom window and that's what you see.
Oh, yeah.
It's not attractive whatsoever. And I asked if there were zoning regulations on the type of lighting that's allowed and permitted. And my fear is that if something was allowed to be done with the properties in question, that the lighting would be then become an issue and it's not very flattering to, to anyone, you know? I live in an old house. I think everybody looks better by candlelight myself, but that's just me. But that, but that being said, I have
I agree.
I have put a lot of money into that, that old house
Yeah.
to, to make improvements. I do my best to keep it up. My neighbor is, is Joe Ferrone. He is phenomenal at taking care of his property, over, over the top. He is a proud homeowner as I am, as my neighbor across the street, the Coens as well. They've worked really hard, put up fence, new driveways. People are doing things to improve their properties all the time. And I feel that this would be a detriment to, to all of us, you know? But the, the ten-second rule is something I tell every single guest that comes to my, to my home because it, it is very
That's shared up and down the turnpike.
It is, it is a problem. Manager section is notorious.
Yeah.
Certainly is. Yep, absolutely. And I like having deer run through my property. I have turkeys in my backyard. There are things that I, that I enjoy and I'm totally surprised, living so close to the Berlin Turnpike, that those things exist.
They're running from the car.
Because of Walden Court and the ridge behind my property, which if you follow it all the way out, goes out to Sage Park. I've seen bobcat, turkeys, deer. I like nature. I think it's great, you know, so um, yeah, I'm just that kind of person. Nothing against wanting to change your property or zoning. I, I understand those questions and thoughts, but I, I really, I really don't think it's in, it's, it's appropriate. I think when the properties were purchased, they knew what they were purchasing, you know? And I think things should stay that way. So I, I adamantly am against any changes, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, yes, Maureen wants to interject something right before our next speaker.
I just did a quick measurement and um only part of Walden Court would have been notified. The five hundred feet only appears to go up to the very back corner of fifty Walden Court. So they probably got um notified that anyone on the other side of the street or further south on Walden Court would not have been required to
Okay, and I think this gentleman, if you'll, if you'll just allow him, I think he had some kind of magical thought here on something that he forgot to mention to us.
The truth of the matter is, I did receive a letter and it was very vague as to what this was all about. Never stated when the meeting was. I called, it said to call zoning, which I did. And when I called zoning, they weren't aware of any meeting or, or any letter that had gone out. He went and looked on a board, I forget his name, gentleman's name, and he said, oh yes, there is something scheduled for this date. And if I didn't call, I wouldn't have known what the date was. I don't know what the
That's
the total procedure is or how that's supposed to be handled, but that's what I experienced, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir, for clarifying.
Uh, again, that is the way the regulations are written.
Okay, so
Contact the office because as we have, um, the commission is well aware that um public hearing dates are subject to scheduling and they get, the regulations are now written to send out the notice. They can send out the notice as early as when they apply for the their applica, and put in their application and the commission would not have um scheduled the meeting yet. So they can't put that on their note, on letter. It may change. It may not be the date that's put on the letter. And so they, the notice, the suggested letter, we supply a suggested letter of notify, to a butters and it says to notify the zoning office. Um, and it may have come in shortly before the application, right after, and no, and had not had a date at that time.
All right. Okay, great. Now this gentleman would like to address us.
Hello?
Hi.
Uh, Pall Varina, twenty-five Walden Court and one eighty-six Middletown Road. Uh, which are neighboring properties within five hundred feet, so I did get a letter. And um, our neighbors have been very polite tonight. They showed up a little late. I was at my mother-in-law's eighty-fifth birthday party, so
Happy birthday.
Dear mom.
Happy birthday, mother-in-law. Well, you look swell.
So when I received that letter, I was outraged. Because the way I look at it is I lived there. I've lived there for twenty-nine years. We labor over our yards. We have a beautiful neighborhood. It's a great place to live. It's central to the whole state. And we knew very well when we moved in there that we were on the Berlin Turnpike. And it's a plus because of all the convenience of the shopping. But we also knew that it was zone residential. And the way I look at it, zoning is to protect neighborhoods and it has a purpose. And I think it's outrageous, simply outrageous, that someone can If someone can buy three residential properties and then wake up in the morning and decide they want to make them commercial. It's a great financial play because you buy them at residential valuation. You turn them into commercial, then you get commercial valuation and the revenue streams associated with commercial. But absolutely outrageous to move into somebody's neighborhood and now start to set up shop. And for me, it's that simple. I listed all the other reasons that have been echoed here tonight about the safety. Huge issue. My daughter and I almost got killed at that intersection when she was three years old, I was driving her to daycare. It's been dangerous for a long time. This would make it more dangerous. The lights and the noise, the mobile station, I think you're referring to. It's like you're in the middle of Vegas. I don't know who allowed that, but you got a house right in back of it and then you got all these blue and red mobile station lights right in front of it. It's crazy. So the traffic, the neighborhood, we have a beautiful neighborhood. And that includes not just Walden Court, but there's all the houses right down Middletown Road. I feel sorry for the Coens. The Coens have a beautiful house that they maintain perfectly. And now they have these three properties that are barely maintained in their backyard with the potential of getting worse if there was any kind of construction development or commercialization of those properties. They're right there with their kids. The the valuation issue is a real financial issue. The dominoes will fall. You make an exception for one and then everybody's going to use that as a precedent for the next. And before you know it, we're all living on the Berlin Turnpike. These three properties in total are worth about eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in valuation. You could take any two houses in the neighborhood and exceed that valuation. So I'm really baffled, I'm upset. I think it's outrageous that benefit of one can even be considered to outweigh the whole neighborhood and community. So I'll just close on that. Obviously not upset with you guys. That someone would even try something like this and I will fight it till the end, so this is just the beginning.
Okay. Thank you. And is there anyone else here in the public? And now I'll turn over to Zoom land to see if there's anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding this application. I see Mr. Edge is here, but I wanted to see if there was anyone on Zoom. Okay, no one in Zoom, so Mr. Edge.
Sure, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road. The property that they mentioned is a thirteen seventy-six Berlin Turnpike, which is a mobile station. My guess is they probably went in there, didn't even look at the lights or the town was not even notified when the lights were in there, but we can probably have our zoning enforcement officer take a look at it and see if it fits because there are, there are rules in place.
As to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any complaints with regard to that, so we, we have noted it. Okay. I'm sorry, and, and well, we did make a note for Monday.
Yeah. Maureen, I think that's becoming a common lighting that they're doing because if you go down to where Home Depot is, that gas station on the corner of Home Depot.
Yeah, the one they.
They have, they have that lighting around their windows also.
Okay. We'll check the.
But it's still, you know, with the color and the blare, you know, it can be a distraction, especially if they're closed or whatever, just to leave the lights on makes no sense. But anyway, Mr. Edge.
Yes, I just, a couple of things. One, the, the yellow building itself, the zoning itself, the SPD, which I'll call the shopping center zone is definitely a challenge, you know, the, the property owner heads come in a couple of times to get tenants in there. It's more of a question for the commission and for the planner, which is hypothetically rezoning that one, but not touching the other two properties, is that possible? And the reason I mention that is just the fact that it's a commercial property already and we want the commercial property to be nice. And in the current zoning, it's very challenging to do anything with it. And again, and I, I don't know because I'm not a legal guy, I don't even know if that's possible if you were to consider one versus the others or if it's an all-in-one, it's just, it's just a question for the commission.
Hey, hang on, hang on, hang on, he can't take, I understand it's a public hearing, but if, if there's a comment when we open back to the floor, okay, just to keep it organized. But anyway, so I'm sorry.
It was just a question of whether or not it was an all-in-one thing. I was not sure if it was or not.
All right.
It, it sounds like especially from the neighbors, which I completely understand that the R fifteen on those two properties with the other one being commercial. I think all of us want the property to look nice. We want to have viable tenants and the current zone doesn't give that opportunity is really what I was saying. And I don't know the answer, that's why I just put it out there.
Okay, let me just ask you a question, Mr. Edge, because I remember not too long ago, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong and I know that you will. Wasn't there a school that was going in there into the old loft building? And there was an applicant before us and I think it was, I don't know if it was autistic or it was a special needs school.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was gonna do a daycare or something.
Yeah, it was like a daycare, it was only gonna be yeah, and she wanted fencing and whatever. And did not that come to fruition after all the work that was done in that?
Never heard from that person, they never actually came through our office with anything they did, so I never was in touch with them, so I don't know whatever happened.
Whatever happened to that?
Well, I know during the permitting process, I don't know if they became a tenant there.
I don't think they ever did because.
I think they had a tenant space for the offices for their business and again, I'm remembering right now, I'm not looking at minutes, I'm not looking at
Yeah.
applications or anything else, so this is.
Along with the rest of us.
And so I believe they had their offices where their the personnel would go out to the families and have kids come in for, for treatment, kind of.
Yeah, or sessions.
Therapy and stuff like that. But then they were asking to have more of a daytime, long school or, or daycare type of length of time, which changed their uses as far as building code went as well. And if they were going to have the kids there for the longer period of time, instead of like a doctor's appointment, it was becoming
Like a daycare.
A long, long period of time. And they were going through some challenges with the building and/or fire departments codes for access, for bathrooms, for some aspects of code.
Yeah.
And I don't know what happened with that because zoning signed off on the, their ability to go in. I don't know whether they were ever able to meet other department qualifications and/or ever pursued it.
Not that it matters, but it just seemed that there was a lot of energy poured into that application and it just never went in.
And they did, they applied for the fence around the back and a closed area so that they could have therapeutic equipment out there as well and, yeah.
And I look at the SPD zone and, I mean, if a shopping mall went back there, I'm not, I mean, you know, the effect on the neighborhood would be intense. I mean, it just, that in itself doesn't make sense. SPD zone, which is why I hope we can look at that long-term and figure out what makes the most sense for that area. But again, and I'm just, I was throwing a hypothetical out there because just again, we want properties to be vibrant, we don't want them to be vacant and the zone is just challenging.
Yeah. Diane?
So just to, I think the answer to your question is that the application before us, we would consider in its entirety. And that if the applicant wished to make an amendment while we're in public hearing, I think they could do that, but it would be the whole thing that we're considering.
Thank you, Commissioner, yeah, I was just curious, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Do you allow rebuttals as part of this process?
We're still in public hearing, so yes, if you, if you wish.
That is the most backward logic I've ever heard.
For the record, your name?
Twenty-five Walden Court, one eighty-six Middletown Road. Do I need to make my house commercial to maintain it? If you own a property, you maintain it. You don't say I need to switch zones just to maintain the property. Maintain your property.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then one other comment, yes?
Yes, Chris Cody, one eighty-seven Middletown Road, right across the street from Paul. I don't understand why the homeowners, when they purchase their homes on Middletown Road or Walden Court, Renee Drive, Westview Terrace, why it's our responsibility that the owner of what I'll call the lofts building made a poor investment decision and couldn't put the businesses that were allowed there already. And now he's asking for a zoning change. I know for my parents who bought the house in nineteen fifty-five, the Berlin Turnpike was there. However, three seventy-two was not. The original name of my street was Old Middletown Road because the only way you could get to Middletown is down my street. We all know and knew that the Berlin Turnpike was there. We've already explained the challenges we all have living there and we're willing to live there and make adjustments to our daily lives. What we're not willing to do is make further adjustments and have the neighborhood become even more dangerous. So the fact that the owner of what I'm going to call the lofts building made a poor investment decision when they bought it, knowing full well what could go in there. There's been an accountant's office, a lawyer's office. I even believe Mr. Cugno, who is down at the Board of Ed now, his office was there at one point. John Casablanca Modeling School was on the top floor. We're not against businesses being put into that yellow building, the lofts building and the adjacent building. What we're against is changing the zoning to allow businesses with more traffic in an already bad situation. So again, I reiterate my objection and my opposition to the zone change. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. So, Commission, John?
Can we have Attorney Pentor? I have a question. Would your clients be willing to limit the application to just a zone change for twelve fifty-one?
You know, I'd probably have to discuss that. I was wondering if we could continue this, reevaluate the comments, staff comments, maybe continue it to the next meeting, so we could do that. Just to answer that question about the school that was in the lofts building, they were there for about a year. But I believe they lost some of their state funding, so they recently vacated the property. My client has really owned these properties for about nine years, so it's not like he bought these and just decided to walk in and change the zone. We've been trying to make them work. Unfortunately, the office office rental is becoming a much more different business today. But we'd ask for a continuance to take up that very question.
Thank you.
If I may, before you continue, we did hand out the staff comments, you've all received them, I think we handed Attorney Pentor a set of them as well. And in the staff comments, I just want to point out a couple of things. The, the most concerning as a planner is that the pending analysis that's being undertaken by the P O C D consultant F H I Studio, the, in the P O C D, the goals and strategies has studied the S P D and S P D D overlay and S P D D two zones, determine how those districts could be modified to be more effective in attracting appropriate development. Consider allowing a set of uses by right, permitted uses, comma, expanding the range of uses allowed by special permit, including residential uses as part of a mixed-use project and reducing setbacks in minimum lot sizes to facilitate mixed-use development. It's called out in number four point eight of the Implementation Plan Strategies and Actions and under Economic Development as a high priority. And Economic Development Commission is, if they haven't already signed the the extension to the contract, we've already started working. As you know, in the zoning, when we were doing zoning analysis through the P O C D process, the two twenty twenty-three P O C D process with F H I Studios, they've are contracting to work specifically on the the B T, some business and industrial zones and that includes studying the B T one zones and locations and uses as well as some of the Teds and Ted's eight is one of them. And Ted's eight is what we now call the Hilltop and is previously called the Golden Triangle and we didn't hand this out, but I am going to hand out the map of the Ted's so you can see that the parcel at one fifteen Middletown Road being in the S P D D overlay and the parcel at if I got the address right, I think it's twelve fifty-one Berlin Turnpike it being in the S P D D is in that Ted's, which is the targeted, targeted economic development zone, which is subject to being studied now. I think from the planning perspective, the commission should consider their role in planning as far as taking into account the knowledge and expertise of the experts that have been hired to provide an analysis.
Yeah, sure, we'll just. Just, yeah, you'll be the last one to make a comment, okay.
So I have, have an issue with just a couple of things that transpire, so.
Your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joseph Ferrone, one fifty-two Middletown Road, I'm sorry.
Okay.
When they came back up and saying, can they change the application for this? So the way my mind thinks is you have a building that you're having problem getting tenants. Deal with that building. Why are you trying to change a residential house and put that into it? My mind goes ten, fifteen, twenty years on the road. What is the long play here? Leave the house alone. Work with your zoning in the building that it was built for, whatever it may be. It's not, I don't think because you're having an issue getting tenants in one building, that you change a residential house to something that it's not. It is only egress to Middletown Road.
Okay.
So that's, I don't want to hear. I'm not a dictator. I don't like the fact of hearing a continuance because now they want to change their, their long game. And, yeah, you owned it for nine years. What years have you, what, what is going on that now you want to change it? You should have known coming to this meeting what would be, what would happen. The turnout was better than I thought. I did not know this would happen, I didn't, nothing against them, I didn't think anyone from Walden Court would have came because personally, I just didn't think that. So I think now I'm not a legal person. They're seeing the pushback that they possibly might get, I don't know what could happen. But I just, I think there's more things going on and hopefully down the road, things don't go south.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now, yay. All right, so the applicant has asked for a continuance, all righty, so do we need a motion for that to continue?
I will make a motion to continue to the next meeting, which is April fourth, I think.
Yeah, I think it's April fourth. We're, because we're toward the end of March, right?
Yeah, keep the days straight.
I think it's April fourth, that's the first. So the Tuesday is the second, third, fourth, yeah. All right, so we have a motion to continue to April fourth. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, the second by Mr. Dyken for the discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Just, I just want to make a comment. The indication was to make the Worthington, whatever they called it, instead of loft candies.
Well, whatever it is, Worthington Place, yeah.
To change that one piece of property, to me, would be spot zoning. It's just one piece of property inside S P D D. So as far as I'm concerned, that would be a type of spot zoning. And I, I wouldn't be for that, you know, of spot zoning type of situation.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so any other discussion? I'll move the motion and are all those in favor of the table? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved, okay. Okay, thank you and good night, everyone. All right, no problem. Yeah. All right, now we're going to move on if we can. Now the hour is getting late. And, okay, so next up we have the application of Nicholas Maurizio of Colliers International, prepared by Attorney Timothy Zim, no, Sullivan, excuse me, at property zone at five fifty, five fifty-four Berlin Turnpike Associations LLC and the B T one zone four. Applications for the site amendment plan for the property at five five zero to five five four. Applications for the site amendment plan for the property at five five zero to five five four Berlin Turnpike. That's item I, and then item double I would be the two-part application, submittal pursuant. To General State Statute's eight dash thirty G for text amendments for the Berlin zoning regulations to create a new section of Berlin multi-family. Workforce housing and site plan approval for the multifamily housing development at five twenty-two Berlin Turnpike. Okay. So here we are. And what do we have? We have arrived.
I spoke with both Maureen and Jen earlier. Because of the. Efforts made. Efforts towards a stipulated judgment in the appeal of previous denial of. An application for these properties. That we thought it would be best to just continue the, the, the opening of the public hearing on these matters till April fourth.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Okay. So we applicant is asking to continue or, or to postpone or whatever, though.
hearings.
Yes.
One and two.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to postpone opening the public hearing till the meeting of April fourth.
Okay, we have a.
It'll be within this sixty-five day period.
Yes. Yep, we have a motion by Ms. George. Do we have a second?
Well, second.
Thank you, Mr. Biella, for the discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Okay, thank you.
Can I say something? Is that possible?
Well, we're not in public hearing.
Well, I just think it's a little ridiculous. I just waited for over two hours to speak. On this topic to find out they've decided on a continuance.
Okay, well, excuse me. Excuse me, we have just, we have just discovered that ourselves, so.
Okay, well, I guess I'll come back then.
Yes, please. Thank you. Alrighty, on to, thank you, Mr. Attorney Sullivan. All right, on to the deliberations. Applications of Little House Living LLC. For Christopher Smith. Alter and Pearson LLC submitted by the general. Connecticut General Statutes H dash thirty G Affordable Housing Use. This is a deliberation of applicants will be continued due to terms of the pending stipulation and judgment. An extension has been provided by the applicant. The date of the required court hearing stipulation is now set for April first, twenty twenty-four. And the public can come, can attend and participate. Please contact Planning and Zoning. So I guess the deliberations. Under seven A and which would include, include I and double I, I guess you want to call it, or one and two. So this is all going to be continued?
Yes, please. Jennifer Capola for the record. Yes, if you could just continue it. That April first hearing date may change, just so that you know, because. Attorney Smith sent me an email and. I don't, it's not necessary for me to give into the details. If it changes, there'll be a new notice published.
Okay.
We put on the, on the website.
All right. So do we have a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to continue to the next meeting of April fourth.
Okay, Ms. Dorsey has a motion. Who has my second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dyken, for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so move. All right, then we have the special permit site application of David Camacho, and this has also been postponed.
Yes, it has.
Abled or whatever. Okay, do we need a motion on that to continue or?
It's been made.
It's, okay. Zoning map amendment for Pavan Kumar. Member of the Russia. This is just what we just had, so this is also being continued. Okay, great. Application of Nicholas, this is continued, right? Yes, okay. Planner's comments. I can't believe we arrived. Thank you. All right, I have to get out of here at ten tonight. All right, planner, do you have any comments or do you want to?
I have too many comments and I'm sorry in advance.
Okay, read them. Okay, well, listen up.
Going to try our best. So we have. Think it was handed out. It wasn't handed out. Let me know. We have twenty-nine Steel Boulevard is asking for administrative review and approval of their, of an outdoor cooler. For where it's sited and seated and screened. And I believe you got. In, yes, thank you. It was handed out already lots of times for planners' comments. I keep them and hand them out. And I'm ready to discuss it. So this is the small building on their site that's behind the Hop House building. You have the Hop House multi.
Yeah.
Mixed use building, and then behind it, there's a, a small square commercial building. They have a tenant who is looking to occupy, but would like to be able to put. The cooler and. And with the screening as shown along the, the side of the building, which you also have. In front of you, it's on the side that will then. It's kind of the northwest side. You know, the tenant? Chris, my.
I believe it is going to be a combination, I may have the name wrong, Fancy Bagel and Busy Bean together. But I could be mistaken.
Bagel and coffee shop.
Busy Bean is going to, is going to combine with this guy, yes, expand into the new building to expand their capacity. I want to say it's Fancy Bagel, maybe I'm mistaken with that. But it is somebody they've been talking to for a while, and I believe it's going to be their man Busy Bean.
Yeah, so Hop House got the outside cooler along their western side as well. It, it appears as though that has become a. Typical. Item that's being requested adjacent to. Restaurant uses, food uses. So the dumpster is straight behind it. So you have the drawing. I don't think we loaded the drawing. No, I actually should have it. Don't think. I don't think I left it open today when I wanted to, no. I'm trying to, to get that, the map that you have. I'm trying.
Are there any tenants upstairs, like over this cooler?
No, this is a one-story building.
Oh, it's a one-story, okay. I'm just concerned that there'd be noise or, or whatever bouncing off those little buildings there.
Is it going on the side where there's parking?
So there is the, the strip of parking that drives, the drive-through between Joel's and. The Hop House building. That driveway that drives through to Steel Boulevard and is one way. To where the building will be, and then this is around. The north corner of the new build.
So how, how is this gonna, how is this going to be affected when they start, they're clearing behind Joel's right now, so they're going to start putting their other building in there.
It's on what's green space now. It's being proposed on green space. What, what is green space? I'm not really, so let me. So is that large enough to see? I'm not sure it is. Hell, if you can. Just because of the, the way the screen has to show. Too far, sorry. Hard to find the right. Scale here. So as you come in Steel Boulevard, Hop House is right here. And then you drive in, you have the angled parking. You're going, and here is the driveway that goes between Joel's. And Hop House and its tenants. Goes straight in over here on the left will become parking. For the new residential building that is not being constructed yet. You come up this driveway. The dumpster is here screened. And this is. A loading area into the building. This building has basically four sides. But this back corner. The, the owner is. Or Newport is establishing this kind of the back corner of the building. And then the new buildings, the new residentials will be over here. That's a parking. That's, these are parking spaces. Is that what you're pointing to? These up here? Those are three parking spaces. So there's a parking in front that's on Steel Boulevard. And then there's parking all along that driveway that comes up the west side of the mixed use building. Behind that building, and there's a few spaces, and there's loading here. I don't have, I don't have a distance and we can ask them to come in. I guess the, the question here that they've asked is. If this is enough information to allow for it to be as administrative approval, or if you want to see an amendment to the site plan to allow it. In which case we'd get that, you know, blow up more detailed information, have them give me, give our department. More information. The building foundation is there. Yeah, the building foundation is there.
The purchase pieces are there already as well.
Because there is no foundation for this yet, cooler yet. You have a foundation.
Closing in the grass area.
Yeah, I know.
Into the driveway.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you were asking if it was on the.
So I think.
I didn't get, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
I think it's not necessarily narrowing the passageway, but lengthening the passageway. Lengthening the. The sidewalk. But the cooler would be on a cement pad, I assume.
I assume so. I think they put in a, if they don't already have. Impervious surface there, they would have to add impervious surface. And so down at Hop House where they added it, they added it over what is a, was a sidewalk area. Already.
So it's not like to, so why don't we have?
I, in my opinion, it's. The other area was a sidewalk that created connectivity. This is not in an area that. Is otherwise being used for connectivity and sidewalk and whatnot, but it is adding. The space, so I think if you were to consider the outside cooler, the proper screening and because it's a. Visual building of, around its entire perimeter would be something that the commission could ask for.
Landscaping. I'm going to agree.
I. I'll do whatever you guys really want, but I, it's, I trust Maureen. To, to do this, and we've typically got so much on our agendas.
Yeah.
These days, and Newport has been very reputable with. All of the other things that they've done on this project.
I'll make a motion and Maureen do a staff advice.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey, for the discussion, but your points are well taken.
You'd like, you'd like screening added.
Yeah.
The. The fence seem to be the same color as the building. And the, although I do believe that the. Trash that's right adjacent to it, so this right here does have the white. The fence, and I think that's what they were. Trying to create similarity to. Again, like the building? Okay. So, so the color to match the building and landscaping as able. I do see that we have underground. Drainage there and util, probably utilities as well. It's definitely a drainage. So. We'll have to do what we can with the existing infrastructure. Thank you. Thank you. They will appreciate that. I have a couple. That's only one. Oh, you had a. So do you want to speak to that? Or we can, but. Or do you want to wait till the comments are finished? Okay, okay, thank you. Me either, or I actually was thinking, okay, we'll come back to it. Just an FYI coming up will be at nine Steel Boulevard, which while I have this picture up. And we don't have da, details on it yet. I can't seem to get there. Hold on, it pops. So in the front of Hop House, the paved area is there for patio for outdoor dining. They'll be coming in to. Ask for a pergola in that area. Evidently, the sun is rather, is very unbearable, even with the. Umbrella is there, and again, do you want that to come back for a. Site plan amendment? If it meets all the zoning requirements? They have. Oh, yes, they have a pergola as well. Again, I don't, they knew they weren't giving me enough information. We just want, they want to start the application process if they should be coming for a site plan amendment as well. And when they go into their design phase. So Staff can handle, sorry?
I remember asking questions about that when we first were talking about the patio.
Yeah, you know, that was actually one of the questions I asked whether or not they had any information. Because I thought that there might be a pergola discussed during their site plan applications and. We, again, we haven't researched into that yet. We haven't dove that deep, but. Tony Valenti couldn't, didn't have an immediate recollection and knew it wasn't. Wasn't submitted for approval at any rate. Or, or, or designed onto it, but it may have been discussed as it could be done later. You may have, may have said that. We just haven't found that. Reference at this point. We do have a couple of use inquiries.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think you need a motion to tell me to do something administratively.
Pretty, pretty.
The, we do have a couple of, of different properties in town. All actually industrial where we've had some inquiries about uses. And one of them would be a trampoline business. So those are often in industrial zones and industrial buildings. And what we're thinking is that it would be, it would categorize as a recreation use, which isn't a. which isn't allowed use in the industrial zone, um, in, in an industrial building, but want to make sure that, you know, we didn't find another category it would fit into, but it is kind of a
So like people would
Different people go in and, yep. You must have done it. Have you done that? So you could describe the business better than I could, I Yeah, so. Yeah, we weren't allowed to when I was a kid. We couldn't play on trampolines. That was one of dad's rules. Um, we did. Um. Um, the, um, you know, the other comparison I had was frequently um, studios for gymnastics, gymnasiums or studios, depending on how they're categorized, usually have trampolines as well. So again, that's a rec- recreation use or a studio use. That's unchristianly. Alright, so if that's an allowed use, that's the category that we'll discuss um, that for. I believe it would I, I don't know what the use of the building is currently, but I imagine it's a change from some sort of industrial use and therefore it would be coming in for um, for commission review. Um, then we have inquiries with regard to other industrial buildings for a classic car storage without repair. Um, I have limited information on that, although I did get a copy of the email they sent to Chris, which Chris may have, right? Is that the email you sent me?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a copy of it still? And if you'd entertain him saying what the um, what they described it as, but um, it does not seem to include a repair use. I did um, specifically ask whether or not they would be doing anything that would require dealers licensing and or repair work or the storage or if it's simply storage. And if it's simply storage, um, it would seem to fit the category of public warehousing or storage, um, which is a site plan approval use, but I also want some feedback if anyone has any on that with regard to that before we send them down a, an approval path.
Yeah, it is a um, classic car operation that I believe is in an adjacent town, and so initially they were looking at doing the storage and classic car restoration in the building. And what the email says is, I'm just gonna get in touch with the client and they're switching it up here. They're looking, taking a second look at using the Berlin business solely for classic car storage. And would use, do the classic car restoration elsewhere. Does that make the conversation easier? So essentially pure storage, um, but I did send her a message and I'm looking to get an answer as well to find out whether or not the restoration involves a DMV. Again, uh, they just want to do storage. But again, I want to know about the DMV because I know DMV is something this commission has been very, and I agree, very dead set against have anything with a DMV license going in the industrial zones. Because otherwise it will take them over. Um, but if it's just storage, just wanted to kind of get your take if that seemed to fit the, as Maureen said, storage, public storage, self-storage.
Is it, is this like secured building? Is it all interior?
Be entirely interior, if, if I understand this, this one correctly. Again, it's more, this, this one and the next one are the path for the, them to go down. The either would be a site plan approval for a change of use of, at minimum, depending on whether, they might be a special permit use. I'm not, I don't have the category in front of me, but they would still be subject to approval, but before they go to the expense of um, preparing plans and applications, at least to know we're um, in the right categories. Um, the other one is, and, and I think I'm trying to have conversations with multiple departments um, in Town Hall and haven't um, secured those conversations yet with um, various entities, including the police chief. But it's for a tactical training facility, which would be all indoors in an industrial space as well. Um, simulated conditions, of course, training, self-defense, classroom spaces um, for PD departments as well as individuals, um, and including simulated ammunition. Is that the right word? Simulated ammunition? Is that what they used as the word? So simulated ammunition? So, um, and whether that, um, the, the, how to categorize that and whether it would be something that so we can pursue looking for the category it fits within.
Where, where is that at?
A, another industrial space.
Will that sound transcend the walls?
It's a environmental spot.
Cause it's loud. I mean, if you have natural fire.
How did you get there? You know, so high security, but once you get in there. Lot of places, you just can't go.
Yeah, we have to go through the whole process and make sure that we have a category that it fits in the zone besides, but I kind of wanted to pursue where, where it, um, the feelings were. So this is a private company that said they work with both police departments and private individuals, and it is one of the questions to the police chief to make sure as, um, you may recall, you had a proposal a while back and it didn't seem to have the um, um, coordination with the police departments that we thought there was, may have been. May have been assumed. So we're just, we want to, I want to vet that as well. But, um, okay, um, just FYI real, real, real quick so we can move on is I am um, we're working on a new event forum for reoccurring annual events. As you recall, you, you have us administratively handle those now. And the forum is starting to be used. This year we just had it filled out for the Strawberry Festival, so we're pretty excited for that. And it's getting circulated around to the departments so that um, it can be used. Um, and it, we may adapt it again after we use it a few times, but we're using it. Um, and that's, I think, all of them. Sorry, thank you for your patience. Now, don't forget about the special meeting. The special meeting, so we're, we're requesting that the commission schedule a special meeting um, to discuss the um, pending litigation, right? Is that, I'm sorry, I, and I'm gonna defer to Attorney Coppola for this, she's just gonna roll off her tongue.
Um, so as indicated in my communication to you, uh, looking to schedule a meeting for Wednesday, April the third, um, to receive public comment on a draft stipulated judgment for the matter of five fifty Berlin Turnpike Associates versus the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, which is pending the land you stock it. Uh, so that's why Attorney Sullivan is here. You do have another executive session on your agenda for tonight to talk about that matter as well as just very briefly, uh, the pending matter and the nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike litigation as well. So um, I did receive a response uh, from all of the seven regular members that everybody could attend. I, of course, uh, would sort of encourage the alternates to attend just in case we do lose a regular member. Um, you know, if somebody's sick, somebody has, ends up having a conflict or something. Um, so uh, I believe that, that everybody was indicating that they could do a little bit earlier. Um, but uh, not uh, before six. Um, there were a couple of people said, that said they needed six o'clock or later. So, um, I don't know, you know, what the preference of everybody is as far as that's concerned. Would you like to do six o'clock? Okay, so uh, we will let you know, Maureen, or
Will, somebody will.
Um, yeah.
Room availability, location and everything, we'll check.
Um, please, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to schedule a special meeting for uh, Wednesday, April third, twenty twenty four. Um, to consider, uh, for consideration and possible action on stipulation for judgment on the pending litigation pertaining to five fifty five fifty four Berlin Turnpike um, for six PM.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dorsey. By Mr. Sigma for the discussion, all is a favor. The opposed move, okay. Thank you. Do we have to do the execution?
Updated information that asked for this location of five fifty five fifty four, so I do think that the architect had some of his folks available just to go through of what was submitted.
Okay.
Uh, you should have, were those handed out, Maureen, or do you need?
Nope, they're over there. So well, um, if you make your motions to go in, um, um, and to um, adjourn from executive session, we'll then um, hand those out as, or maybe await for the chair to come back. And invite those that you need to. I do have an updated list of invitees. So why don't I write those down for you? So five people have signed up for that, for the AquaTurf. Um, unfortunately, none of our staff is available to go to join you.
Oh, you know, um, just with regard to that, so is that the one that Franklin Pelosi supposed to speak at? On short-term rentals?
I don't remember.
Cause I, I kind of would like to go. So the um, the Pine Orchard, the, the Branford short-term rental case is being argued before the Supreme Court on March twenty seventh at eleven thirty. So it'll be streamed on CTV and TV. Like, so if you go to their website, you'll be able to watch a video of it. And it's, and it's um, it's an appeal on a short-term rental case involving the Pine, the Pine Orchard Association's ZBA and Branford. That's March twenty seventh at eleven thirty. So it'll be, you know, it'll be on.
Can I ask you if you wouldn't mind sending an email? Would you, would you either send an email or send an email to Ashley asking her to send it out to the commission? Because they just asked for it and I, neither Alexa or I will be in the office until next week.
Okay.
Well, I won't be in next week at all. Usually starts at five.
I was thinking about going to that. Oh, oh, um, I, about the AquaTurf? I did, uh, you know who sent it to me? It was Paul. Because he sent it out to the ZBA members, and I think there are a couple of ZBA members. I think Tony's going and Christine is going this.
And a couple of you guys are going.
I, I don't think it's too late. I think you can go.
Well. Yeah. Um, no, he should be out to go, kind of.
I could say.
Yes, we'll sign him up, but no, we sign up for them because the town pays for the thing. I just have to get that orchestrated. Um, so you can go that night? It's a Thursday night. Next Thursday night. Next Thursday night, with just for the good of the order, it's um, only Thursday in case that affects anyone. As, I was surprised. Um. Okay, can you make a note? To
Yeah, I think you get, I think.
You gotta ask Ashley to add.
It should be interesting. Because they're gonna have argue the case. Impressions. You can watch it on, you can watch it online. You'll be able to watch it that day. So, um, we do need, Maureen, or did you, did you?
They didn't make their motions to do anything yet, though I haven't changed anything. That was way earlier.
No decision will be made in executive session, so those, anyone online just gonna say when we come out of executive session, we're gonna motion to adjourn. So I'm gonna say a good night to you folks and um, so I need a motion to enter into executive session at um, now this is after my bedtime, it's ten oh seven. And inviting in would be, uh, um, oh, well, it's part of the motion.
Yep.
So who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. Um, so I make a motion that we go into executive session um, for the purpose of discussing the status of pending litigation at five fifty five fifty four Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC. Um, and to consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of pending litigation of five fifty five fifty four Berlin Turnpike Associates versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and to discuss the status of the pending litigation of nineteen oh six Berlin LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and then to consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of the pending litigation of nineteen oh six Berlin LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and to invite to the um, executive session, uh, counsel Jennifer Coppola, um, Maureen Juisty, uh, attorney Tim Sullivan, uh, Brian Panico, Vivek Eric, Breck McNapp and Alexa.
Gorlick.
Gorlick.
Hey, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rankin, further discussion. Okay, that's it. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed move, alright.
And did you say exit from executive session? Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm gonna end the meeting. Okay, I'm sorry.